This is Monday, June 3rd. It is 6:30 PM. It is now the public hearing for the Water Pollution Control Authority. June 3rd, 2019. Public hearing ground rules. A public hearing has been scheduled to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed sewer service fees for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Fosco?
Here.
Commissioner Cicoli?
Mr. Posada?
Here.
Mr. DeBette?
Here.
Commissioner Klein?
Here.
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 The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current Friday, May 24th, 2019, Town of Enfield legal notice. The Enfield Water Pollution Control Authority will here will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall, Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut on Monday, June 3rd, 2019 at 6:30 PM to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinion regarding proposed sewer fee, proposed sewer service fees for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Information can be found in the office of the town clerk at www'enfield-Connecticut.gov. Susan O'Nicky, Town Clerk, dated May 21st, 2019. Item number three, the ground rules for the public hearing. There is no time limit, but I ask that each person not take up too much time so everyone has the opportunity to speak. After each person's desires has had one chance to speak, we shall permit individuals desire a second chance. After those individuals desire a second chance, we shall permit those individuals desire a third, fourth, et cetera. And please refrain from personalities. Quit, we are going to open up with a quick presentation, then we'll allow the public come up and speak specifically on this public hearing. Turn it over to Kasia.
She's doing the clicking, since we don't have a remote clicker. We felt it important for members of the public that are here and at home just to revisit very, very briefly why we're here today and why we have this independent rate structure. And I'll just tell you, it was because we had several significant violations under the DEP that were threatening really fines of up to $50,000 a day if we didn't remediate. So that's when the town went into the design mode and went to referendum to have the new plant built. It is under construction, will be at the one-year mark in October, and it should be completed in October of 2020. As part of the requirements of the DEP grants and the funding they require in the federal government that we have a separate taxing authority, we could no longer just do it in the regular tax bills because we were paying for this previously, but people didn't see it. It wasn't broken down separate as your motor vehicle is or your fire district and your real estate taxes. It was within the town taxes, and the federal government said you can't do that any longer. So the town adopted a rate program. They had Woodard and Curran do a presentation, and it was comprised of two parts. One is a base charge monthly, and the other is a volumetric charge. So we'll just go into what we funded this year in the budget. As you can see, the operating cost last year was $4,300,000, give or take. Proposed actually was a slight reduction of just over half a percent to $4.3 million. The capital for this year is $1.1 million, which is a drop. You can see last year's budget had $1.8 million, and the reason for that is there's really $500,000 additional that's going to be for road construction when we do new sewer lines, but that could be deferred until to the next budget. This is the total cost of the upgrade. The total cost of the plan, as you can see, is $36 million. Clean Water Fund gave us a very favorable loan at 2%, but it's $23,169,235. We got an outright grant from the Clean Water Fund, the federal money, for doing the upgrade, $5.6 million and change. We just received, the bond commission authorized, and John Wilcox sent the invoice to verify under our agreement with the state for the upgrade, their contribution is $2.5 million. We'll be receiving that shortly. And then we had to bond the balance, which is $4.6 million and change. Now, people say, well, why do we have to pay this? Well, we have to repay, just like we do the high school, JFK, the roads projects, there's a cost to borrow money. The 20-year loan from the Clean Water Fund, which will begin for repayment over 20 years, will be in the FY '21 budget. And as you can see with the principal and interest, the payment schedule is listed there. It's approximately $1.6 million a year. The next loan is the bonding, which I indicated we borrowed 46, or $4,672,206. That will begin to have to be repaid in FY '21 as well. You can see, and it's 20 years, but the charts didn't really fit, so we gave the first 10 years of the payment plans on both. But you can see the beginning principal interest, the first year will be $327,000 approximately, and that will commence in '21. So in the past, because we had commingled funds, and the government said we had to stop, we owed $3.5 million from the general fund. We've been paying it back, and we still have $850,000 to go, and that's going to be budgeted on a yearly basis. The proposed rate will generate $6.9 million per year, and the future need by 2023 with those repayments in place, and we'll show you the schedule, we've had it in the past of Woodard and Curran, will need $8 million a year in 2023 to meet all of our obligations. This does not include the $500,000 from the NOVAC report for additional personnel. We're in the process of hiring a new superintendent of Water Pollution Control. He'll review the NOVAC recommendations and see exactly what personnel we think we need to run the plant and maintain it, because it's going to be brand-new, and we want to make sure that we don't have disrepair and costs associated with not properly maintaining As you can see, I think we finally got this in a more understandable form. It's broken down in 2019. This is the Woodard and Curran, they were our consultant. The base rate they had recommended was $30 a quarter, and then the volumetric was $3.49 for lower gallonage, and then over a higher rate it would jump to $5.24. Last year, you adopted $21 a quarter, so it was $9 less than their recommendation, and on the volumetric, you were much closer, it was $3.43 and $5.13. In the 2020, the recommendation by Woodard and Curran was to go to 36 per quarter for the base rate, and the volumetric was $3.60 and $5.39 respectively. What the recommendation is here is to not go that high, although that was their recommendation to be online to start those heavy repayments, especially by 2023, but you went with the 2019 initial recommendation, so you went with $30 per quarter for the base rate, $3.49 and $5.24 for the volumetric. To the average household, this results in an increase of $41 a year or $10.28 a quarter. If you look, you can see our current rate where we are. We're one, I mean, just below the top or the lowest rates of the three others, Manchester, New Britain, and Summers. As you descend, the rates are higher. With our proposed Enfield rate, the increase for 2020 puts us in about the top quarter. Going forward, we cannot change the funding needs. Stay with the current system. You can continue to file the recommendation to Woodard and Curran, add to the base rate over time, and add to the usage, the volumetric, or, as we've discussed in the past, and it wasn't the preferred method, was a flat rate. We can see that's approximately $360 a year, but that is no consideration for usage, and there were real equitable concerns that somebody, you know, a widower in a home would pay the same as a family of six, and the council didn't choose to go that route. It can be revisited in the future. And that's the presentation. We'd rather hear from the residents now, but we wanted to put that out there, and we'll put it up on our website tomorrow with the comments from our residents so everybody's informed.
Thank you, Chris. So on this specific, this public hearing, would anyone like, anyone like to speak for the council?
Well, I'd like to, because people at home...
Ma'am, sorry.
Come on up.
You have to come up to the, your name and address, please.
Shall we put the screen up?
Well, my name is Joanne Dion.
So go ahead, ma'am, you can sit down, and your name and address, please, for the record.
23 Walnut Street.
Okay.
Enfield. I own a duplex on that property for 15 years. When it first started in 2014, I'm against paying for people that use facilities. I don't, nobody buys my toilet paper. I shouldn't be paying for them to flush the toilet. So this is where I get my problem. This is a big problem, because if you rent for three people, six people move in, they're already on the state, and now we got to pay for more that they're using. So it's wrong. It's just wrong. It's just like, I feel that it's socialism in the town of Enfield. That's what I feel. So as a property owner, I, a lot of us feel that way. And we're not even, look, the house is not even full, because we're not even aware about these meetings. And that's another thing I don't like about this town. You're getting a lot of people to move out. If you drive down, up, and down the street, there's at least two houses that are for sale. People are leaving Enfield. Too much taxes. Nobody pays for my sewer pipes. If they break, I have to pay them. I don't ask people to help me pay for it. And then the water that we buy and use for us, we fix for those pipes, too. Nobody pays for it. So you got to come up with a system. If we're going to be imposed on the tax, then it should be fair for everybody, not just on the property owners, because we shouldn't pay for people to usage. This is wrong. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council?
Why isn't she charging her tenant?
You would think.
Welcome.
Right, Debbie, responsible for banners.
Good evening, Karen LaPlant. Karen LaPlant, 166 North Maple Street. I've been kind of watching the WPCA and waiting for meetings and waiting for meetings, and I think in the minutes from the January meeting, it was said that, the January 22nd meeting, under miscellaneous, Mr. Bronson stated they are going to address the budget of water pollution control now that it has been separated out and they have separate charges. He noted during the budget session, there will be a separate budget report for the water pollution control with actual budget deliberations, and adopt that before they do the town budget, so that things are transparent and they can really look at all the numbers, at the numbers. And I was waiting for that. I didn't go to the annual budget meeting, I missed that, but apparently that's when the water pollution control was, was shown, besides now. So I was a little disappointed. None of your meetings have discussed any budget items, brought up any subject matters other than something happening right then and there, somebody needing a waiver or a fee waived or adjustment. There's no questions on what's the collection rate. I know there was a huge number of receivables as of the last report we had heard. I haven't seen any update on that. I think it was over $3 million or something. I didn't stop home to get that paper that had the number on it, but I had heard once the collections actually started, somebody actually started making collections, that the collection rate improved, so you should have gotten more money than you expected in this fiscal year. I don't know if that's the case, and I don't know if you people know if that's the case, because it hasn't been talked about in public at all. You may have had public works meetings, you know, subcommittee meetings or whatever, but I haven't seen it anywhere in a public forum in any of the meetings. So what I'm questioning on the budget numbers is, it says the revenues, the projected revenues, not only for the charges of services but for everything else, is $7.2 million. That's on page 74 of the annual budget. Yet, the expenses, or the number that was just mentioned, was $5.4, $5,490,000, or $5,490,000 was going to be spent. So what I want to know is what happens to the other $1.75 million? Where does it go? In the excess money that you collect in revenues, what happens to it? There's nothing showing anywhere that I can see of where does that money go. This fiscal year, it's harder to tell how much extra you might have brought in, but just looking at Hazlewood Waters revenue for the calendar year last year, and again, it's hard because we're fiscal year and they're calendar year, but Hazlewood Water sold, let's see, 7 million gallons more than they did the year before. So that would mean we should get revenue in the sewer collections of an additional 7 million gallons, times the cheapest rate, still gives us an extra $24,000 in revenue. Now, it's not a lot of money, but most of those were Enfield customers. There's only a small percentage, there's a couple hundred customers that are Summers and East Windsor in that possible 7 million gallons. So some of it might have gone to another town, but most of it probably came to Enfield. So the other question I had, you talked about the $250,000 per year payback of the $3.5 million that was borrowed from the town. I don't see that in the budget anywhere, so I'm wondering where does that show up as, as paying it back? And, and I don't think that's included in the $5.49 million, but it could be. I don't see it there. It's not in the capital improvements part of it or anything. And if the budget decreased by 10.7%, I'm wondering why you're actually raising the rates, because that means we're going to have an extra 10.7% plus the increase in extra revenue than we really need. So that means we're going to have even a higher surplus than, than we've actually budgeted for. So I'm wondering what we're going to do with that. The revised budget of 2019 showed revenues of $6.434 million, which is still, at the current rates, is still $944,000 over what we're looking for this year. So again, you're raising the rates, and that's with those capital improvement projects that are listed on the budget included. So, so what's happening, if we didn't even raise the rates, we'd probably get somewhere in the $940,000 additional revenue if we just kept at the same rates. So unless we're putting this money aside for this future thing, but even the payment at 1.7 excess, we've already paid the first payment for, for 2023, and it's only 2020. So I think you've got to go through this. I think you've got to be a little bit more inquisitive as to where this money's going. I know it's a small part of the big budget, the big picture, but this is just as big as any of the fire districts, and as big as a small-town budget. So it's still important money, it's still taxpayer money, and I think it should have just as much importance as anything else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'd like to go back to when I had asked about the balance on the loan of the $2.5 million that the taxpayers continue to pay to WPC, which is supposed to repay the loan back to the town. Each year, you, the WPC struggles to pay it, it's not, hasn't paid several previous installments. Is there any way the balance could be considered as seed money? I had asked this question before, to the WPC and eliminate the debt and the burden from the WPC and the sewer bill, and obviously the taxpayers? I'm sure the council, the town manager, and the town attorney could probably figure something out without violating some, violating some state statute. I don't know if you've looked into this, but I, I believe I asked that on May 6th, probably, or sometime in there, but I haven't heard an answer. I've also previously asked, when you decide to raise revenue of $7.2 million, what is the breakout between the ready-to-serv charge and the usage charge to get us our total revenue? You had to have projected each one as to how much you're going to collect, so we have an idea of where you're coming from, because I cannot tell you how many customers you're billing, and from prior meetings, it doesn't sound like you really know either. The last, well, when I look at the budget, I'll agree with Karen, she mentioned that we're trying to raise $7.2 million, and we only have $5.1 in expenditures. Is it because this time we are not putting down the capital expenditures in one of the sections to come up with that? The difference isn't exactly the same, but maybe you could answer that question. Before, before you changed in 2014 to the, the new way of collecting monies, we used to pay about $1 mil in our regular tax rate, maybe a little shade higher. And that's about $170 a year on a $200,000 value home, let's say, or something like that. It's now going to be about $360 a year, and that bumps it up to $2 million. And that's why I'm wondering, I think we've already paid the money in, the town people, for this loan that was advanced at a water pollution control. So couldn't we somehow reduce that figure and get rid of that loan and figure out how to take care of this and reduce the burden back to the taxpayers? That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone else like to speak on this public hearing on the water pollution control?
Hi. John Porcello, 31 Monroe Road. So I was shocked when I got the bill with the $31 in it. All these things that we do up here that we're doing the estimates, they're all based on a 5/8 meter, right? Well, guess what? Birdland, all the star homes that were built in the 60s, they're all 3/4 inch meters. So that means that we need to take that $30 and do $45, which is $180 this year, my taxes are going to be. Okay? I went from a $16 bill on 5K gallons to a $48 bill. It's a 65% increase, okay? I barely, I don't use a lot of water. So why, when you look at the study from 10 years ago, or from 2013, sorry, where the study had nothing to do with this, this base, base rate, and definitely not all these different meter sizes? And what makes a home that is a family of six different with a 5/8 meter versus a 3/4 meter? It doesn't make any sense. And, and again, I think the biggest thing is, you know, I've been, I've been in Enfield all my life, and, you know, my, my taxes go up about 3%, 3.5% a year, it's a couple hundred dollars property tax. Well, last year, my, my taxes went up 7.75% with this increase of the sewer tax, along with whatever happened to my property taxes. So, you know, up until, up until last year, I was taking the $200 hit a year, and last year, I hit $535 in one year property tax increase. I, I just, you know, I think it was a little shady. I was talking to my father the night before, couldn't believe that that was in there, and all of a sudden I got the message for this meeting, so I felt like I just had to come and say something. But we should definitely do some estimates on $45 instead of the $30, because that's not really showing, I mean, half the towns got to be 3/4 inch meters. I mean, there's, there's a lot of homes that are built in the 60s and above. So that's all I got to say, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council?
Hi, everyone. I'm Christine Crisatelli. I've lived here all my life. I live 57 First Avenue. Built my home in 2005. I am one person. I have a 1,498 square foot home. No. Yeah. 1,490 square foot home. I live by myself. I don't water my lawn. I don't wash my car here. Two weeks out of the month, I'm not even in the state of Connecticut. I'm not even in Enfield. I'm staying in Springfield. Why, when you base this, I have a well. How did you come up with how to charge me? That's what I'd like to know. And how are you monitoring it? Because you can't. Is it fair that a single person of one living here, two months out, two weeks out of the year, a month, is charged the same rate because you can't monitor me? I don't water my lawn. I don't have to. I'm in clay. If I water my lawn, my landscaper's going to get rich. So how did you come up with these figures? And how is that fair? Is it based on a two-person household? What's the square footage? How big is their lawn? How many cars do they have? How did you, I, I really would like to know, I think I deserve to know, how this number, how you determined what to charge someone when you couldn't monitor their water usage? Is that fair? Is that a fair question?
We can respond, I mean, it's not a back and forth. We can take the question and respond.
Oh, okay. But that's, that's my question. I mean, pay it? Okay, but it doesn't seem fair, and it should be fair and just to every town employee or, and town resident. I'm sorry. It should be, and it should be looked at, because it's not fair and just. Not when you look at what I'm doing. My brother Ronnie doesn't water his lawn or wash his cars. Can't monitor him either. My brother Louis was the same way. Anybody who has a well, there's got to be a better way to come up with a figure, other than the median, or it's a two-family house, or it's the square footage. There has to be a better way, because honestly, I can't afford to stay here anymore. I am looking at selling my home, and I love my home. I designed it. I built it. And I love Enfield, but I can't afford to stay here. The taxes keep going up. My paycheck doesn't go up. So how do you balance all of that? I understand things have to be fixed, but why aren't we maintaining them? JFK was a perfect example of that. Fermi's another one. All I saw on the forum was, it was never maintained. Well, why? We put everybody on this council, we voted you in for us. I don't see where you're helping, and all you're doing is, and that woman was right, you go up and down anywhere, there's so many houses for sale. And I don't believe that it's just because the government of Connecticut is driving us into the ground. People can't afford to stay in Enfield. It's expensive, and it's expensive to live. So how can you, you have to balance the budget. I get it, but there has to be a better way, and it needs to be fair and just to everyone, not just a few. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be aggressive, but I'm really heated about this, because as you know, you've never seen me here before, and you probably won't see me here again, because I really am contemplating putting the house for sale and leaving. We have to do something as a town to help the residents, not just keep making bills. Go down St. James Avenue. Here's another question I'd like to ask the council. We're all saying we have to have money, right? Need money. Got to pay all this stuff. They're ripping up St. James Avenue to do, I don't know what, but then we paid labor, we paid materials, we ripped it up, and now I hear they're going to rip up the, and it needs to be done, the entire St. James Road, because it needs to be redone. Why didn't you coordinate it so all of that was done at the same time? That's a waste of resource. That's a waste of money, and it was a waste of time. It's just, it's not, when I see things like that, it makes me wonder who makes those If a common person can see it, why can't a board that we've elected see it and help us? Because this town's going to become a ghost town, because no one can stay, not unless you're a millionaire. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for the council? I'm sorry, well, water pollution control, sorry. That doesn't miss the council.
How you folks doing? I'm James Morris. I live on Elm Street.
Sir, if you would, you could just, if you could just sit off, you have the floor. It's on a water, water pollution control public hearing.
Well, I, I hope so.
Okay, go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
I think you guys are doing a great job. I really do. I can't say enough about it. I really can't. You guys got so much on your mind, and you guys are doing so much. I feel the same, I feel torn, because politics are hard, you know? But it seems like, the lady was just talking, it doesn't seem like anything's planned out to its completion. I know it's hard to proceed, winter, weather, but when you start tearing roads up, and then they fall apart the same, you know, same the year following, because you're doing something with the water. I mean, I don't know how many times they tore up Elm Street in front of my house because of the water that you guys have fixed. I have a huge puddle every winter that I can't keep the ice out of in front of my house. Nobody wants to fix it, but Lord help, somebody gets hurt out in front of my house. Nobody wants to fix it, but Lord help somebody gets hurt out in front of my house. But it just seems to me, when you started this water thing, tax, whatever, it was so insignificant, nobody cared. But now it's becoming a bill that everybody has to care about. And it just seems to keep getting worse. And if you own property, you're responsible for anybody that lives there, whether they pay their bills or not. Because you're going to go after the property owner instead of the person that actually generated the bill and paid their water bill. But they may want water in another town, so they pay that water bill. But you don't seem to go after them because, if they move out of this town, they don't have to pay the taxes anymore on it. They don't have to pay anything attached to it. They just disappear. That property owner's stuck. And it's getting to the point to where we're just throwing more money into it. And we don't want to talk about the other taxes that are coming down the road that nobody wants to talk about, that these people probably don't even know about. But we need you guys to start looking out for us. We need you to maybe scratch your head a little bit if it just doesn't sound right before you make that big decision. The state wants their money, I get it. Federal government, they're going to want theirs. And you guys have to do something to get yours too. I get it. And you're the low guy on the pole, so it's harder for you to make sense of it, and you have to face us, which I give you a lot of credit for doing that. But if you don't feel good in your own town because it's just getting out of control, you don't feel like you have a word, you don't have a say on what's going on, and people just aren't listening to you anymore, and they're just going off doing whatever they want, I can't even tell you how many times they've tore streets up around my house. And then they tear them up again the next year. They put pavement down to cover what they did, they're tearing it back up because it's got potholes. Now, whether it's a water, a sewer, or a gas, or whatever, stuff should be planned out. That's all I'm saying. What I do, I want to reemphasize, you guys are doing a great job. I mean, town wouldn't be what it is if you weren't. But I think you really need to maybe just spend a little bit more time thinking about what the people that brought you into this town and voted for you to do. And Thompsonville's tough. The outer sides, I don't know how many times you guys did the Presidents, the Dead Presidents. I mean, that road, sidewalk, the road, I mean, it's just, we don't even want to talk about it. It's just ludicrous. But there's just too much going on. And we need you guys to start looking out for us before you do those decisions. I wish you all a good night, and thank you again for sitting up there, sitting over here, I guess you guys are the voters, right? But, and listening to us complain because we need that here. We do.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Anyone else like to speak for the council? Going once? Going twice? Declare the public hearing closed? So we got to get to the, yeah. We're going to move right into the regular meeting. We are five minutes behind, so.
Is that curtain going up?
And the people that had some questions about Mrs. Crisitelli, just if you can wait till the next meeting, I'll get you some answers, but we can't answer it here.
Okay, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Just let me know when the next meeting is.
It's starting right now.
Oh, all righty then.
So call the regular meeting Monday, June 3rd to order. 7:06. Prayer will be by Counselor Denny.
There won't be a prayer tonight, but I'd like your attention, on June 6th, 75 years ago, was D-Day. And there was a lot of sacrifices made. One in particular that hit me in the face was U.S. casualties in five days. From the 6th of June to the 11th was almost 9,000 casualties. So I'd like to just take a moment to remember all those people who suffered and died. And also, if you run into a World War II veteran, which there's almost 500,000 of them still living, they must be, they're all over 90 something. Just take a moment and think of the sacrifices that made us all do what we do here in peace. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco.
Here.
Counselor Sikala. Counselor Crisati.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Counselor Denny.
Here.
Counselor Kiner.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mueller.
Here.
Counselor Srazza.
Here.
Counselor Suzak.
Here.
And Counselor Ungar.
Here.
We have nine attendants and two absent.
I'm moving on to item four, fire evacuation announcement. In case of a fire, please move orderly. We have an exit in the back of the room. We can either go left or right out the door, or to our left, your right, out that door, down the first door to our left, your right, down through the stairs and out into the parking lot in case of a fire. Moving on to item five, minutes of preceding meetings. Do we have a motion to approve special meeting May 11, 2019? By Counselor Denny, seconded by Counselor Mueller. Is there any additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Seven in favor, one abstention. Do I have a motion to approve special meeting May 20, 2019? By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Crisati, excuse me. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Seven in favor, one abstention? And do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting of May 20, 2019? Counselor Ungar, seconded by Counselor Mueller. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Seven in favor, one abstention? Moving on to item six, special guest. Tonight, we have from Cox Communications, Sandra Zorkowski. Please come up at this time.
Mayor, just by way of introduction, we, at the last meeting, had a present, well, a resolution and presentation by a group that's going to be doing public service announcements for the town six over the next two years. And also, we've outreached and we had Kasha and our IT Director, Mr. Russell, go to Cox Communications to see what they had to offer. They were very wonderful, and they had great resources for us to use with our staff and volunteers. So we invited Sandra here just to give us a little glimpse about that program that we'll be participating in coming up this year.
Welcome, and you have the floor.
Hi, and it's my pleasure. I always love to talk about what we do at Cox Public Access. And I'm really happy to have had the group come forward and say that they'd like to do some shows about what goes on in this town and what makes this town so great to live in. Your economic committee would like to come in and actually talk about why people would want to live in Enfield. And we'd be very happy to help them make that happen. Cox runs everything with volunteers, and we provide free training and free use of our equipment and free use of our studio to do any kind of public TV shows. Anybody in our town is eligible to take workshops with us and actually produce their own show or work on a show that's already existing. And we've got a few new shows starting up pretty soon, so we'd like to get some workshops going, and we'd love to have some volunteers come through to make that happen. A lot of you that are sitting right here have been on our show one time or another or have had your show. So like I said, we want to make sure that everybody knows that we provide free training, free use of equipment. We'll teach you how to produce a show. We have some people, a core group already, that's ready to come forward and try to pull some volunteers together to make a show happen that will talk about Enfield. Tourism, I believe, is one of the things we're going to talk about, what kind of things go on here, what kind of events we have to offer. We can talk about things that go on in this town. We have a big 4th of July celebration every year that's run by volunteers. There's a lot of positive things that go on in this town that, not just Enfield, but surrounding towns and people that are looking to relocate might find this show of interest as to what might interest them in this area. Anything else that I can? Questions?
Any questions? Just curious on timing on maybe the first PSA, or?
Well, PSA is separate, but we're going to be working with her and getting volunteers together to be trained so we can start put together. She said we're going to concentrate on things going on in Enfield, 4th of July, Mount Carmel, other events that we can showcase and utilize their studios to put those programs together. So we're very excited about it, and Kasha will be in touch. We'll be starting now that the budget's behind us in the next couple of weeks.
If we have people that are willing to be trained, they can use our cameras to go out and shoot PSAs if they want. We can do PSAs in the studio. We can help you learn how to, you know, write for them and shoot them and edit them and actually put them on. Anything that is nonprofit or the benefit of the town, we can help you out with that.
Great. Any questions? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Moving on to item seven, public communications. Again, this is the regular meeting, so you can speak about anything that was on your mind, not just water pollution control. Again, we just ask that you refrain from personalities. You have five minutes, first time up, three minutes the second. We have an hour for public communications. If it goes that long, it would be roughly till about 8:12-ish. So anyone like to speak for the council? Mr. Young.
Good evening.
Welcome, sir.
Tonight, George Young, Holly Lane, Enfield, Connecticut. Tonight, with the PGA tournament and the Travelers Championships this month, I'd like to start the evening on a positive note and do what Mr. Crisati does so often, which is to compliment one of our sports teams or members. I'd like to recognize the Greater Enfield Golf League. It is one of the longest continuous-running golf leagues in the country. It started its 56th consecutive year of play this year. It is a group of 108 individuals who play on 12 business or club-sponsored teams. Members of these teams range in age from 20 to 80-plus and play nine holes of golf each Thursday evening. The team sponsors are many familiar names in the local area, which I'd like to mention at this time. Ambit Energy, RDLE Dodge Chrysler, Constitution Cable Products, Control Module, Gray's AA Club, Jared Insurance, Connecticut Tool, Mike's Auto, Pepsi, Ringside, Springfield Family Chiropractic, and Wealth Preservation Group. They have been contributing in a positive way to Enfield since 1963, and really, I've never heard much recognition in town, so I just wanted to mention it. I know a couple of teams currently have an opening, so I would encourage anyone to consider joining. The players come from all walks of life, including carpenters, electricians, attorneys, policemen, accountants, and many retired and employed individuals. So that's the end of my positive notes.
The accountants are the A-players?
B-players.
All right.
At this time, could we get an update tonight on the roads 2015 project? As it is now June, and I see no shovels in the ground on St. James Avenue. Please identify who the contractor is and when will they start St. James Avenue? Will they finish before December 1st, 2019? I hate to go through another winter with this nightmare, since now I believe the Connecticut Water Company has finished their work. Has the road area of 30 St. James Avenue section been looked at yet for the consistent water content issue in the road? And if so, what was the conclusion? Will it be a Connecticut Water Company problem, or is it the town's? Before the final approved budget is published in September, will the finance department summarize by category of expenses so we can see the summary as I have previously requested? I know we're going to have an opportunity to speak on June 12, 2019 regarding the roadway reconfiguration on Route 5 between Grant Street and University Place. Would the council or the town manager enlighten us tonight as to, one, is this already a done deal? And are we only there to learn about the project? Two, will there be a discussion about safety when passing school buses on what I see is a long stretch of one-way Route 5 highway where the buses make frequent stops to allow students to embark and disembark the buses? And three, do we have to register in advance to speak? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Jack.
Jack Sheridan, 7 Buchanan Road. The people that voiced their frustration at the water pollution meeting, I mean, the water charges, the bills. It's easy to understand why. Most of us in town who pay our taxes have to live within a budget. You guys don't seem to realize that. You don't seem to realize that you should be living within a budget. And instead of just constantly going into my pocket for more money for whatever the things you're trying to do, try to do it more effectively and more reasonably. And we go back to the thing I keep saying. If you get state grants, that's not free money. It doesn't grow on trees in Hartford. It comes from us. Why do you think they're going out and putting tolls in? They want tolls because they're giving us more money for grants than they can afford. Their revenue's down. Revenue will go down continually if you keep pressuring the people to, the price of houses goes down, even if people sell. The prices of houses go down. People come here and they hope that you'll listen. But my feeling is, in all the times I've been coming here for years, oftentimes, you don't listen. It's all this greed, like JFK, putting all of that money into that building that you didn't need to do because you got a grant. Now, the grant is going to cost us whatever, whatever the dollars come out, $30 million. We could have done it for $16, but we're getting $89. So is that greed? We didn't need it? Those are the kinds of things that you could do more efficiently and not have to keep raising the cost. You know, when you had the consultants come in, was it Curran and somebody, I forget the names, they came in and come up with all of these prices that were supposed to be good for the water thing, and now you get the same people doing it for the public works. When you start dividing all of these things from the ad valorem and add to a separate charge, it's still a tax. And when you talk about, our town manager last meeting said, you know, when you look at it, the amount of money that they raised is really small percentage of the entire budget. But you could say that in reverse, too, and say that, well, you spent that much more that you didn't need to spend. It just, it's very frustrating to see these costs keep raising. And then, I, you know, you got unfunded mandates. So the state says they're going to do like the circuit breaker, and then they would, you know, reneg on that. Why they reneg on it? Because they're shoveling out grant money to everybody. We'd be so much better off if we didn't have grants because that would force you to live within your means. That's what we all have to do. We have to live within our means or move out. And I go back to the hot patch machine. I've still not seen that hot patch machine being used. We spent the money for it. It was supposed to do a good job on, especially in the colder weather, to put a hot patch down. I've never seen it being used. So for all of those reasons, the frustration level is, in my opinion, very easy to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
I don't think you're listening anyway, so I don't know why I waste my time.
Anyone else like to speak for the council? Anyone else? Going for the second time? Anyone else? Declare public communications closed. We move on to item eight, council communications. Counselor Bosco.
Okay, I just want to maybe set some things straight, some of the stuff that Mrs. Crisitelli and the Some of the stuff that Mrs. Cristelli and the other gentleman and...
I'm not there yet.
I should say, Miss Cristelli. When, when we go back and you talk about like the junior high being in disrepair, actually, the town council for many years paid for them repairs on there, and we had previous school boards, not like the ones we have right now. The board we have right now works very well with the, with the town council, but the town council was putting money in to get repaired in the school. Once you give them money, they can spend it on anything they want, and they weren't spending them on the repairs. And we can't have a back and forth, but I will be more than glad after. You can give me a call or meet me in the hallway, and I'll, I'll talk to you about it. So, the town of Enfield did pay for these repairs. They just didn't get done. The thing with George and the mill rate where we used to pay a mill for the sewer, but that was, you know, everyone keeps saying, "Well, I don't, I don't water my lawn. My lawn don't take sewage." But before that, when you had that one mill, mill tax rate, you were paying it on your car. You're paying it on your motorcycle. If you did anything and you, you know, businesses had to pay it on their personal property. So, all that stuff before, you were paying for it. You just didn't know it.
Oh, it's going to go down.
So, well, again, there's no back and forth. You know, so people were paying this, this bill, but they're paying it for things that they didn't. You, I don't know if you may be able to get a meter put in, which would, would meter to flow, because there is no way, other than an average, that, that they have. And that's how they came up. The average household paid so much money. When you're talking about streets getting dug up, well, we don't own the water mains. We don't own the gas mains. So, what happens is, we've been working hand-in-hand with the water company and the gas company, trying to get them to do the repairs before the road is done. But we can't force them to fix their water mains. We can't force them to fix their gas mains. So, as time goes by, if something deteriorates, you may have a brand-new road, and that water main deteriorates, gets cracked because, you know, when they, when they compact, the brand-new road gets dug up. It's not the town. It's not our water main. But we can't force them to fix it. So, where you're talking about St. James getting dug up, paved, dug up, paved, well, again, we're not doing them repairs. But that's where we saved you money, because we worked with the water company to get all the mains and all the gas work done in the street. So, this way, when the brand-new road goes over it, 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 it's going to be, it should, where it shouldn't break. Now, we can't cut a road and leave it open for a year. So, what they do is they cut the road open. At their expense, they have to patch it, which doesn't mean that a month later from there, they're going to do a little more work next to it, and they dig their patch up. But that's for public safety, so the roads are constantly have blacktop on them. So, that's why they have all them patches and all that stuff in the paving that was done on St. James, so that they could make the road as safe as possible, and you're not driving on a gravel driveway or roadway. And what happens is, we had like, Mullen Road was really bad. We had to, because we didn't have the funds and we didn't have the, the means and the engineering at that time. The road wasn't engineered to, to do it. So, we had to grind it. We had to pave it so the road could be safe. And then, we can get back at it at another time when we had the funds to do it correctly and redo the road. So, you may look like things are getting done over and over, but a lot of that stuff, town of Enfield has no control over. Water mains belong to the water company, and gas mains belong to the gas company. I'm trying to remember everything else. On the sewer tax, I'm going to vote no tonight. I don't think we should be doing meter size. I voted no last year because of the water main size. But that's there. That's how they made their calculations. But ultimately, you need X amount of dollars at the end, so you have to fill and make it. So, if you did three-quarters and you had the half, though, then they would have to come up here, and this one would come down. So, it's all a balancing act, and we do think of things ahead of time. We do try to save you money. If we didn't last year, you would have had a huge tax increase, because the state cut us a lot of money, and we do depend on the monies that the state gives us. And it's not an Enfield problem, because if you look at the budget the town manager had posted, what the municipalities in Connecticut, their tax rates are, and we're not the lowest, we're not the most expensive, we're somewhere in the middle. But Enfield offers a lot of services that other towns don't, and someone's got to pay for the services. They voted at the last meeting for $125,000 to save the adult daycare. That costs every single person some money. But if you're someone that uses that, that service, that service is invaluable. Would you be willing to get rid of that service? Would you be willing to get rid of any services you're getting today to keep the rates down low? And that's where we're going to find in the future, we're going to have to have a balancing act, because there's going to be some things where people are going to lose some services so we can keep the taxes at a level rate, because, you know, we need X amount of money. You know, the union contracts say everyone gets a raise every year. The state of Connecticut, we're going through it with, with the Water Pollution Control Plant. They say we need a berm. It's going to cost us a ton of money, because the state's mandating that. There's a lot of things that happen that you guys don't realize, and it's probably just as bad if we don't tell you ahead of time, because automatically, you know, we got so much information running through our head, and you go over it and over and over it. You almost feel that everyone else knows what you did. But when you have an issue like that, it's nothing. Just call. You know, each one of us, our phone numbers are there. Just make the phone call.
And I've got no phone call back.
And, and, no, I can't, I can't go back, I can't go back and forth, but I can tell you one thing. I answer every single phone call I get. And, and my phone is, this is my, my phone. I use my cellphone number. Anybody that goes and looks up my phone is my cellphone number, and I use my cellphone number for business. So, I make sure I answer every single phone call. And if someone leaves a message, I call them back. And most of the time, if they don't leave a message, I always call that back, because it's a customer that may have a problem, and I make sure I, I answer it. So, if you have any other questions that aren't answered, either after the meeting, I'll be more than glad to talk to you, or you can call me at another time. And I would, 860-982-8827.
I'll call you Friday.
And I will, and I will answer the phone call. And if you, if I don't answer the phone call, leave a message, and I will call you back.
You know what they say, hell, I'm in no fury like the woman's woman.
Well, you know, I've been, I've met worse and meaner. So, I'm, I'm okay. Jack, they do use it in the winter. They're afraid to use the patching machine in the summer because of the motorcycles. They're afraid someone's going to fall on the stones. But we do use it in the winter, and it works very well. I think I got everything that I remembered that I was going to talk about, but I do have some other things. Through the mayor to the town manager, Abbey Road in Monroe, they went and they fixed the curb. It's all washed out again. We need to either put a curb in there or something. I just had someone come down to me, my cousin. Teaville Cemetery, she says it's, the road is so bad. She called the church, and they told us the road that was going in, that's all pothole and beat up, is ours. So, can we check on that? At least we got to make it so it's, it's safe for travel. And to Ann Street, we fixed the catch basin a while back. It eroded out again. They went in and they patched the sides of the catch basin, but they didn't put any dirt to back it up. So, if some kid's walking off of the curb, it's a pretty good trip hazard. Either that, or it washed back into the basin. So, if we can take a look at that. And I guess, you got my cellphone number? If it's anyone out there, call me, and I will, I will hopefully answer it. I mean, I hope it's not going to be a five-hour-long phone call, but we'll, we'll get you till you're, till you get your answers.
I've got nine hours.
Okay. Thank you very much, and...
All set.
I'm all set.
Councilor Denny.
Through the mayor and the town manager, could we, could I have Donald come up and explain some of these streets and when they're going to start?
No, he's going to, I would not want to take him out of order. We have other presentations this evening. He's going to be coming and giving an entire Road 2020 project at the August meeting, and he'll answer all of these questions at that time. I don't want to put him on the spot to be answering things without preparation.
All right, well, I'll try to answer. George, I'm, I'm still, I'm good.
Go ahead, yep, sorry.
St. James Avenue will be done this year. The contractor, off the top of my head, I don't know. It's the same contractor as St. Engany Terrace, Marshall Drive and Joan. Till Street, in District 4, anyway. Till Street, Birchwood, and Birchwood Circle. And if I missed any, maybe they can yell at me. They're in the process of being done. The water company did a disaster on that road over a year and a half it took. The water that's leaking in the ground, when we start to repair it, we will, the water company will discover that. It's their problem, because it's coming up, and there is a leak there at the bottom. And I, I think the engineers and everybody knows about that. So, St. James was at the end of the list. I tried to fight to get it ahead of time. Nobody wanted to do it, and it's being done this year. It will be done before December, I promise you. And if there's anything else. Oh, one more thing. I just, what Joey said. Pine Grove has a brand-new street, and as soon as they paved it, one week later, we had a gas leak there. They had to put a patch. The Eversource came and dug the street up, brand-new, never was driven on. I never even was on the street and saw them digging with a, with a gas leak there. I mean, those kind of things, we can't avoid. But St. James will be done. Thank you.
See, Mr. Denny, you know as much as Public Works. He's going to be coming up to do my presentation if he wants to elaborate. Mr. Nunes can do it at that time. That was my point.
Chris is going to take care of business. They're going to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items B2 through B4, EFGHIJKL MNNO and P to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Motion to suspend the rules and move to vote. Seconded by Councilor Mueller. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Nine in favor, zero against. All right, you start the floor.
Okay. I have one more thing, and actually, if Mr. Lee would like to come up to the, because he has more information than I do.
I don't think we invite anyone.
To explain, I...
It's public.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. On Sunday, the Hazeville Institute will be celebrating its 150th anniversary. There'll be a presentation at the Holy Trinity Church at 5:30. Mr. Bill Hoesley will be doing that. He is a historic preservation expert. They will be doing tours, and you see it up on the screen. They'll be doing tours at the Hazeville Institute from 3:00 to 5:00. So, come on down, see what's going on. Hazeville Institute is the historic anchor of the Hazeville Village. A lot of the people that are involved in the Hazeville Village have been doing this for decades, and we're hoping that we can kind of lasso that building in and get it open in an expedient amount of time. The, the back addition that people have seen go up is the addition that'll hold the lift, and it will be their secondary means of egress. So, it's a safety and accessibility. So, come on down, see it. Colonel Hazard donated the building to the town. The town's been taking care of it. See its history. It's been everything from a school to a youth center to a library. It's, you know, and I guess that's one of my things that, you know, I think we can count on is change. So, and hopefully, it'll be something else in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Crisati.
All right. For the people that, that talked earlier tonight, either was at the public hearing or for communications, from George to Jack to, to everybody that spoke tonight, we're going to listen to what you say, and I do listen, Jack. All right? You know, we, we hear you, you know, but, you know, we're up here. We, we listen to what everybody does have to say. George, thanks for bringing up that Greater Hartford Golf League.
Enfield.
The, the Greater Enfield Golf League. Thank you for bringing that up. It's pretty important to our community, and thank you for being positive. Appreciate that. Couple other announcements that, that I just want to mention. Tonight, Liz Davis is not in attendance here today, because her daughter's receiving a state award as a scholar-leader, which is put on by the Connecticut Association of Schools at Aquaturf tonight. And I just wanted to shout out that her daughter, Betsy Davis, and Madeline Bouchard from JFK are getting recognized tonight for being scholar-leaders from JFK. So, congratulations to those two. Another thing that I would like to mention coming up this week, that's going to be starting at the Enfield Square on Elm Street, and it's going to come up. Route 5 is the, the Connecticut State Special Olympics Summer Games torch run. The Enfield Police Allied Rehabilitation Services and Enfield Allied Stars are all going to be taking turns running with the torch for the Connecticut Special Olympics State Games, which are going to be held at Southern Connecticut State University this weekend. Opening ceremonies are Friday night, and the Enfield Stars team will be competing in swimming, soccer, and track. And the, the team is ready to go. Team is all set. They're trained for the last three months for this event that are, that is coming up. So, we wish, wish them the luck. If you have that opportunity to go out and see the, the torchlight run every year, they've been doing it for years now. It's quite impressive, and I know that Carl has been involved with that for, for many, many years. I do have two other concerns. First of all, through the mayor to the town manager, and this is something that we had mentioned in regards to the parade. First of all, it was brought to my attention by some residents that the division lineups this year, especially for the Memorial Day Parade that we just had, usually, the lineup is on the east side, and the majority of the divisions were lined up. But I did notice, and I had some residents complain to me about, you know, that some people were setting up like in their front yard, and it was on both the east and west sides. And usually, the lineups are on the opposite side where St. Joe's Residence is. And, you know, placement of the portable toilet in somebody's front yard, which was a total mistake. And I know that won't happen again. But that was brought to our attention, and, you know, you know, parades are a big part of our community, and we, we still have to be cognizant of the residents during that timeframe. Also, on the corner of Pearl and Orchard Hill, on 227 Pearl and Orchard Hill, there's a, I don't know, pothole or at the bottom of their driveway from, you know, the plowing from the winter. There's pretty much divot. If you guys could just maybe take a look at it, DPW, just to take a look at that, that area. I did get a complaint on that also. My, my last other comment is the Commission on Aging is still, you know, there's senior home repairs still accepting applications for the work to be done in senior homes, minor repairs, and especially now that the weather's getting a little warmer out. You know, people need their air conditioners in their windows. Call and set an appointment through Social Services. Okay? Thank you.
Councilor Guynor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the town manager, I want to thank you, Chris, for using the clout of your office to convince the owners of that vacant garage on the corner of 190 and Broadbrook Road to clean the place up. They scraped the paint off. They repainted. And there was also a, a health, I think, hazard involved there, too, with the stall being open and vagrants using it. That's been locked up, and I... open and vagrants using it. That's been locked up, and I appreciate your work on getting that done. Thank you. And just one other measure, before the council meeting began, I was talking to Mr. Nunes, and I'd gotten a couple of calls from senior citizens, and they were saying that it's very difficult for them oftentimes to bring their tipper barrels down to the, down to the street and back again. And Don informed me that there is a program that I was unaware of through Social Services that helps these people when they need this help to bring their tipper barrels again down to the street and back. And I think that for a lot of senior citizens who are handicapped, this is a very important program. And Don, I thank you for that information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
Maybe we'll get this into Town Manager's report. I know we talked about the breakout between the usage fee and the base fee. I don't know if we can comment on it tonight or maybe at the next WPCA meeting, which will be on next meeting. Maybe we can put that. I know John has done that work, so maybe we can just put it into public record. And so, you know, people know, for Mr. Young, I know he's asked that question. You know, and also, too, if it's not tonight, can we have the breakout? Why? You know, the deficit situation we inherited as part of, again, to do the math for people. So, the questions on the math tonight and why there's, you know, again, it's important for us to reduce our expenses. We also have to raise revenue to make up for some of the deficit that has been occurred over a five-year period, which maybe people are forgetting from the presentation that we did back in, I think, January timeframe, which is on your website, too, by the way.
October.
And you know another thing, too, is that, again, on April 15th, you made the public announcement of the water pollution control along with the budget. So, I don't want anyone to think that this is some hearing. This wasn't in public information. It was a press release. It was a town council meeting. It was on TV, and we had multiple different meetings. And you also had the meeting, the first meeting right after, where public could go back and forth, and you actually got some questions. Mr. Young, for example, asking some good questions in public, where you could have that back and forth. So, again, we did have meetings. It was publicized. And, you know, I understand that, you know, no one wants to pay more taxes. But again, this was done back in April. I want that to be clear. And the only other thing, again, is that I want to just congratulate the Enfield baseball team for making to the third round of the baseball tournament. The softball team made it to the tournament as well as did the boys volleyball. So, again, some of the investments people are talking about are actually getting fruit, as our, and our kids are doing well in school. You know, and again, participating well in some of the state tournaments. And again, I think, you know, the baseball game that was down at the Yard Goats, anyone had a chance. It was really done well for the kids. They had them on the big screen. They showed pictures of the kids. Enfield traveled well. There's a lot of people from Enfield there, and they did a good job. So, I will end on that note. And I have a question, Maria and the town attorney. We get there first. Moving on to Town Manager's report, before we get to project, I'm assuming you want to answer a few questions before we bring up people, or how do you want to do it?
We could answer questions first on, if you have any other issues. I'll just elaborate on Mr. Keiner's comments, that we did identify that as a need for some elderly residents for assistance with their tipper barrels, and we do have that program. It was to have gone up on the website. I know Donald was working with mine. If it didn't go up, we'll make sure it does, because that's a great resource for those people who need that assistance. In regard to parades, as you said previously, we get blamed for a lot of things. We don't organize the parades, but we'll certainly share that with those who do organize it, because I think this year with Mr. Plamont and not being present, there's probably some disruption and of responsibility. We'll make clear to them. I'm sure that was unintended, but we'll pass it along. I'm sure they've already heard, but we'll make sure we reach out to them.
So, if that's it. Any other questions on the par report? Moving on to the Head Start Stowe report.
Sure. And what I'll say is, I'll have a lot of these questions, and I know we all get frustrated, and the residents do, too. A lot of these questions have been asked and answered, and we've put them in presentations. We've had people address them. But unless it really affects you and until you really have the question, most people don't realize or not aware of it. But I would point out that it would be beneficial for people with questions on the entire sewer use to go to our October presentation with Woodard and Kern, and it documents, and goes over every public hearing, every council meeting, every subcommittee where all these matters were discussed, which were also recorded, and there are minutes of for people as a good reference. So, most all of the things when people come up and ask, "Why didn't you consider this?" Well, they, all of these questions I heard this evening were considered. Unfortunately, as you said, Mayor, and I think Joey, and even Mr., there's no perfect solution to this. In trying to be fair and equitable to one group, you're always going to have somebody else who's affected a little differently. So, there's no way that one size fits all in these type of matters. And I know the council struggled with it, whether it's a flat fee or usage and base rates, none of it. People have wells. People have rental property. There are commercial. There are residents. There's no one shoe, you know, size fits all. So, the council tried to do the best, and even with these next increases, it's not going to be perfect. But I think they tried, based on the input from our consultants, to make it as equitable as possible, and it can always be adjusted in the future. But we do have costs. John will address the questions that were poised this evening. We have looked at the issue of paying, forgiving the loan that we owe the town. It's not workable, because we have to then expend all of our fund balance first before we do that, and that's not something we want to do. I want you to know, when we looked at the capital, it was reduced by half a million. Those roads, that $500,000 we didn't put in, has to be spent. We have to have new sewer lines, and that's just a down payment on it. All of our pump stations, at the cost of millions of dollars, which weren't in the referendum and aren't in the upgrade, have to be funded. So, I know when people come up, it's frustrating for us, too, not to be able to give the answers right away and bring up the staff, and it lingers out there sometimes that, you know, why weren't these things addressed? What are we doing? They were addressed and thoroughly, but it's sometime there is that deficit of getting the information out to people at the time when it becomes that they're interested in it. So, we'll continue to make those efforts to communicate. To that end, you know, we do work on a lot of projects. Let me tell you, doing the Water Pollution Control Center upgrade, we meet every single week with our architects, with our project managers, with myself and the assistant manager. It's a daunting task. We don't have a building committee to do the water pollution control. We also have the JFK Building Committee, which is meeting, and, you know, that's going to be a huge project coming online. So, the town is, you know, doing a lot. We're still, and we will do the presentation on Road 2015 and the future 2020 road project. That's a huge undertaking of staff time. So, the town does do a lot of things, and they do it well. One of my pet peeves, like a lot of the residents and you, is when we do a brand-new road, and it's beautiful, and we've told the water company, and we've told the gas company, and let us know if you need any repairs. It's done. It's pristine. And the next week, they're coming in to rip it up. And they are state entities that have all kinds of immunity and statutory rights that we can't fight against. When they come in and want to do it, they're going to do it. And if they want to do it the next week, they can do it. And if they want to do it the third week, they can do it. And it's frustrating, but we have very little control. We try to coordinate with them, but they don't always respond to us. So, we share that frustration. Two major projects. Again, these are big undertakings. They have big ramifications to the townspeople, and we try to be upfront and forthright. One is the move from Head Start, taking the Head Start program and moving it to Stowe, and bringing back in students that we are now transporting out of town at a great expense and a great cost emotionally to those students. Now, a few months ago, the Board of Ed came, and they had an expert group do a presentation. And basically, they received a standing ovation, because it's a great idea. I knew it was going to fall to us, though, on the town side, to logistically make it happen. So, we've been meeting every Monday, and we met this morning, Board of Ed, all of the people concerned. On the town side, I like to say, we're doing LeBron. The Board of Ed and the Scholastic and the, they're doing the brains of the operation. So, if people have questions, they could continue and should continue to talk to the superintendent and to the board, because they're talking about all of those things scholastically and programmatic and where the classrooms will go. What I'm doing, and what the town is doing, is making sure that Stowe can accommodate this new group of students coming in from Head Start, and not diminish, but enhance the program for the Head Start children and for the Stowe children. And we're committed to doing it. We identified from the get-go a few issues at the building. Donald is here to address them, because we're not going to allow this move to go forward unless we do it, as I said, and address all of the needs of the students that are going to be in that building in September. He's going to do a presentation. I'll identify to you four areas that we had concerns about and we are addressing. One is the parking, which was already difficult. Two is the busing of the children there. Three, air conditioning, because we're going to be utilizing the gymnasium. And four, storage at the facility, and I guess to a lesser degree bathrooms. So, Donald has been tasked, and we've been meeting with his subcommittee every Monday. We're making great strides on all of those issues, but he's going to give you an update primarily on parking and on the air conditioning. Donald?
Talk about the food, too?
Hmm?
Talk about the food.
Food?
Remember?
You always want to talk about food. All right. He has a good story on food, but you want to do it before or after? Do it now, Donald.
I'll do it before.
Lift us up.
So, to take a cue from Mr. Young, starting off on a very positive note, on May 19th, to start Public Works Week, we had a food drive at ShopRite between 12 and, or 9:00 and 3:00 o'clock. And during that time, we were able to collect 181 pounds of food through donations through there. But we also collected $689 in donations from the people and also from a local 1029. So, out of that, $250 went to the Enfield food shelf along with the 181 pounds. But with that $250, they were able to buy, with their buying power, about 1,200 pounds of food with that. The other $439 went to Loaves and Fishes, which, again, with their buying power, is able to purchase at least 2,500 pounds of extra food through that. So, some of the people that helped were Lisa Ellis from the library, Doug Finger from RRM, Adam Majoris from WPC, Adam Morzak and his wife Amy, and my daughter Emmy were there, and also Peter Burke, who organized everything. Peter's a 26-year employee. He also was a volunteer at North Thompsonville Fire Department, and now he's volunteering at Shaker Pine. So, if you see Peter, who is very distinguished, will buy his handlebar mustache and similar hairdo as mine, you can pick him out very easily and say hello. So, on a good note. So, I just wanted to share that. So, thank you. Okay. So, Chris was talking about parking. So, we took a kind of an out-of-the-box approach through Chris's guidance about actually converting parking spaces in that circle. So, to utilize that circle to its advantage. So, with there, there's, we were, I was able to actually, let me get my mouse going here, 15 parking spaces through here, 11 on this side with two accessible stalls, and 13 on this side. So, we have a progress. We have, on the south side, we have 34 spaces that are, that will be paved, and we'll have two accessible stalls right here. There'll be new walkway to the flagpole and the like through here. So, again, we'll be able to gain 38 spaces through there. We do have, fortunately, we have catch basins that are already here, and we're able to pitch and then to use the, to use that to our advantage, to drain the water off through there. So, again, these will be paved. Now, in the back, we'll have 25 spaces through here, another 25 here, and nine in the back. So, all in all, with the total new parking spaces, we'll gain 102 new parking stalls with two accessibles in the front. We already have 30 spots on this side, 29 being regular stalls, one being accessible. And on the southeasterly side, if you were, is, we have 44 parking stalls and three accessibles on this side. So, all in all, total for this whole property, we're able to get in 175 parking stalls and have six accessibles. The area back, in the back of the building, is not going to be paved. We'll have to use millings through there. We have plenty at the transfer station. So, we need to come up with some, I need to come up with some creative way for winter to ensure that cars park in a straight line, that it's easily removable for buildings and grounds to go back there and plow it and maintain it. But that's minutia right now. Where the big picture is that, again, we'll be able to gain 102 new stall, 102 stalls for this move, considering there's 34 in the front. So.
So, that's going to be in parking. I'll just say that, obviously, there's a cost associated with this, and I know the council's committed that we have to make it work. Mr. Dreszek has been able to talk to the bus company. In our budget, we've allocated $100,000 for the buses before and after-school program. Mr. Dreszek has met with the bus company. They will take on that responsibility, thus freeing $100,000 in funding from our budget for next year, which we will put towards this expense. I don't think it'll cover it completely, but it'll be a lion's share. So, that's the funding aspect, and we'll keep you apprised when Mr. Nunes gets firmer figures.
But we do have, you know, we do have an opinion of probable cost right now, and that's, with a 10% contingency, it's $135,000.
So, we're close.
We're close.
Sorry, Mr. Crissadi, you had a question?
Yeah, just a one quick question. How would you access the back parking lot? Is it over here?
Turn your mic on, please.
I'm sorry. How would you access the back parking lot, considering the playscape over on this? Are you going to be blocking off, like where that playscape is?
No, we're going to utilize the west entrance right here and just keep it the same with how people are parking right now. They're going in, just coming into the back and parking.
Be able to just follow that right around?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And we'll be looking. We have some other options of perhaps a separate entrance, and we'll have to be looking at wetlands, depending on if we keep the program there together. But this will accommodate all the needs for the upcoming year by the time we open, and we'll be looking at other solutions as well. But this will address the concerns for the short term from when we open the end of August.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, if there are no further questions, we'll move on to air conditioning. It's, we are required, and we haven't had air conditioning in the gymnasium. And so, this actually is good, because for the present program, we should have had it, and for the new program, we absolutely need it. So, it's a two-pronged approach, and Donald will tell you where we are for the short term. And again, we have the long-term solution, and he can address that. And then I'll address the cost of that.
All right. So, there's two different concepts we're going with. One is obviously to try to get a permanent chiller in there before, let's say, August 15th, just to make sure that it's commissioned and the things like that. And we are working with several HVAC companies right now that are on the state bid to try to get this done. One of them is Carrier. We're trying to work with the school department bids that they have. So, we're actively working on it, and with what is existing right now, it does not look like we will get the permanent solution by August 15th, just because of just the sheer amount of characteristics in regards to the existing equipment, to the space that needs to be chilled and the like. We are exploring design bid options right now. We could go with the possibility of a standard bidding project, but we'll know in the next week or two how we're going to proceed with that and what's the quickest route for that. Our goal is to have this completed before the end of the year, to utilize the Honeywell funds, because they are available. And that's why I was saying, it's going to take probably six to eight months to get this through, through design. If there has to be building modifications, we don't know yet, but it's going to take us some time. But in the interim, again, we do have, we have developed an interim solution, and we're going to be, we could be using temporary chillers to ensure that the gym will be properly cooled, and they'll be by August 15th, 2019. We solicited four quotes. We've received two. American Spot Cooling, so for one month, from August 15th to September 14th, is $7,500. From August 15th to October 14th, which is two months, it's $14,400. And Spot Coolers is a little less on the two months. But Spot Coolers has a long list of demands requiring like full replacement insurance, lifting of equipment, all electrical connections and the like. So, American Spot Cooling is going to be, if this is the desired route to go, we will have this onboard by August 15th, 2019. So, temporary chillers, these are examples that they provided for us. This is on a trailer-mounted one. The generator that you see here will not be needed, since we will have power there already. We're not going to need that. It'll just be direct connected in. So, we're not going to have that. So, it could be on a trailer. It could be on the ground. It could be on something similar to this. All they're going to be doing is providing a similar structure to this with some ducting going in and out, and that's how they will do it. And there's another larger unit where, again, there's three coming in. So, that is.
So, in regard to the funding, as Donald mentioned, we can use the Honeywell funds. We have about $100,000 available. We'll see what this long-term cost is. We will encumber that. We have to use it by January 1st. So, because we know bidders are on the state contract, Mr. Wilcox has been involved in the meeting so that we can encumber that and sign the contract and have that properly expended, so we can utilize those funds. If it goes over, we will let you know. Currently, you know, we need to adjust and do design work, because it's about a 30-ton unit that's required to properly chill it. But we will have the air conditioning in place for the children by the time the school's opened and throughout those couple of months where it'll be warm in the end of the summer, early fall. And then we'll do the long-term solution before the next summer or before the warmer weather comes. We've also addressed, there was a concern for bathrooms for the faculty. We identified an area, and we already opened another adult bathroom. That's up and running to assist the staff. We've identified an area in the school that would be appropriate for another bathroom for children. That wouldn't be a short term, but we're looking, getting cost estimates to see how we could do that during the year. It's not absolutely necessary, but I think it's something that we would be desirous of having with the additional students. We've talked this morning again about the kitchen, the food. All of that is on track. Whether or not we need to buy a freezer, or we have, you know, existing that we can use within the education system remains to be seen. Storage was a concern. There will be some outdoor sheds for some of the items that are used seasonally, but there's adequate area inside that we've identified with our consultant, Mr. John Deg, who's worked for the school department with Mr. Gar and the fire marshals. That's appropriate. We have that available, as well as partitioning from other parts of the school and school system. So, I think we- So I think we had a very successful holistic approach to addressing all of the logistical concerns. On Fridays, those in charge of the Scholastic, the brains of the operation, are keeping updates in regard to the program for Head Start and Stowe, and they'll continue to do that. We'll be posting our information on the manager's website. We're putting that newsletter as well, so people can go there, and we'll keep everybody updated as we proceed. In regard to Head Start, they submitted this plan today, they talked to the head building inspector. There are minimal modifications that need to be done over at the Head Start building before those students come in. We think, and Donald's been working with Mark Gar and their experts, we think that Building and Grounds will be able to do that work, and the school board has the funding and has committed it for that purpose, so that will not come out of the town's side. So we'll continue to update you, and any questions people have, continue to forward them to us, and we're dedicated and committed to making this a successful program and transition for all of the students of the town.
Any questions? Counselor Kiner.
I'll throw you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, we put to rest a rumor that I keep hearing, that the Head Start building was built with, or put together with federal funds. And the rumor that I'm hearing now is that the Federal Department of Education might be causing us problems, because now this building is becoming a state or town-controlled building. Is there any validity to these rumors?
I've, that was one of the threshold questions months ago, when Mr. Dreszek proposed the program. He's inquired, that's part of his bailiwick in regard to his experts and people running Head Start. He's been assured that that is not the case, there was no impediment. There, there was federal funding expended, there's a 10-year window which has expired, and he's been.
Deputy Mayor Mike Bill.
He's been given the green light. We'll never be able to, and again, we're, I welcome these questions, and I welcome the opportunity to publicly state it, so people know that they are rumors, and if that were true, we would stop, there would be no ability to do this program. So that would be pretty simple. It would make my life a lot easier if they would come out and say, "We can't do it."
Thank you for that information.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Chris is right, and also, the building committee, that was part of the referendum that the town passed, where we put all the additions on the elementary schools and on JFK. So basically, the Head Start was, the town builds the building, and they would fund the program. And that's always been kind of what we understood it to go forward when we were on the building committee. So it corresponds with what Chris has for information.
And I did, I did check again with Mr. Dreszek Friday, after we talked, and I checked again this morning, and he reassured me that they have permission.
Any other questions?
Just one final comment. With all these questions that people have been coming up with, and rumors, all right, and the majority of these questions and rumors that are coming up, it's one thing that, when we started this program, everybody gave it their blessing, and just like with any new program, a lot of people are apprehensive about change. And the bottom line is, nothing will change if you don't want to change. So we're doing things, we're being innovative, and we plod forward with it. If adjustments need to be made as time goes on, then we make them. But let's move forward with this and be positive.
You know, I just want to say, I know you guys are working very closely with the board. I mean, we've heard people comment about how, you know, we don't commute, we're not commuting, working together, or we're not, we don't plan things out. Here we are, two or three years ahead of the curve, doing this between a joint board and council initiative. To Bob's point, we were all, everyone was briefed, every member of the board, every member of the council for six months. This wasn't something that was just sprung out of the air. Three or four years from now, maybe not that long, you know, when regionalization is forced upon some of our school systems, and maybe at some point, we would have lost control of Head Start, and lost control of, you know, providing quality special education and being a leader, as opposed to someone who has to now send funds to other towns to fund our kids, you're talking, again, a check right now to crack is 1.6 million on average. That comes directly out of the people's local taxes, comes directly out of your taxes, the money doesn't follow the child. And here we are, again, looking ahead, saying, "Look, we need to start this. This is an innovative program, it's going to provide a great program for our kids. We're working together with the council and the board every single week. Years prior, I think Councilman Bosco's made these points for many years, when we didn't really even talk to each other in the past. We work, we meet weekly. There's, to Bob's point, there's bumps in the road. The hardest part about any plan is implementation. That's the hardest part of any plan." And I appreciate the fact that you folks are listening, I mean, you heard that the parking came out of a meeting, a joint meeting with the board about two months ago, and here you are already addressing it. We do listen. In fact, we're actually very proactive about it. And yet, you still, and it comes with a territory, you get the criticism, however, we are looking three years down the road right now. We're not looking about exactly right now. Three years down the road, and if we don't do this, our local budget, even more so, will be under pressure to be able to maintain our services at a very reasonable tax rate. That's what this is about, and it's about bringing kids home who are unfortunately are bussed all over the state, who deserve to have their education in this town. And the other piece here, that, again, we haven't made a big deal, I don't even think the board has made a big deal out of, every kid who goes to our school from when they're born to when they're 12th grade is going to get steam. Every child. That's important for people to understand. Every child to have the same opportunity in this town. And you can debate whether we spend too much, or we don't spend enough, but the bottom line is, we are being very fair. And I am, I'm going to say, I'm 100% behind this. I hope we continue, we're looking forward, yes, there's bumps in the road, and I appreciate the fact that you are willing to listen to those. Every Friday, a newsletter goes out. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to the individuals on that newsletter. But again, I appreciate the update. I hope you'll continue to do this over the summer, as we get closer to August. And again, I, again, I saw a rumor, again, a rumor of $750,000 for an air conditioning unit. That's some air conditioning unit, I'll tell you. That's some air conditioning unit. So again, these are the things that we have to continue to, again, let people know what we're doing, and that we are listening. And we're trying to do it in a very cost-effective way, working together with our partners in the Board of Education, to provide every child the opportunity they deserve in this town. That's why this is important. Appreciate you coming here and talking about this. Because again, I agree, we should not fall to rumors, we need to, here's the facts. And you can debate it, if you don't like the facts, that's fine. But these are the facts, and I appreciate the fact that you're willing to come here and do this. Again, another presentation, and you're welcome every single meeting, if that's what we have to do, so people understand that we are working very closely toward the Board of Education, and we are also listening to people who have concerns. So you're welcome, this could be a standing meeting for Donald, if he chooses to come for the rest of the summer. Because I don't want anyone to, we're not, we are, I don't want anyone to think that we're afraid of answering these questions, because we are not afraid of it.
No.
In fact, we are on the front foot, because this is innovative, and it's going to benefit not only the town, but our children, and that's what matters here. So you're welcome, and I'll say it publicly, you're welcome to become a special guest for the rest of the summer till September.
I don't think you should threaten him with that for his summer vacation.
Well, he may be in a good mood in about two weeks, so he should be able to, he should be able to, he should be able to come.
No, as I said, we're going to be meeting right up until the time the program opens successfully in the fall. We meet every Monday on the logistics, the joint team, and every Friday, they meet at Stowe and Head Start for the Scholastic portion of it. And I have to tell you, there's enthusiasm, optimism. We, when we started this, I mean, we really couldn't have done it if we started now. This was started almost a year ago, when the superintendent had this idea with his people and started to put the wheels in motion. So to that degree, you're right, Mr. Mayor, we are ahead of it, and we're working very hard. We'll continue to meet as often as it takes. We meet every week twice, but we talk almost every day. And we'll continue to chase these down till we have good solutions, and that we enhance the program. And I just want to say, from the academic experts and people who are in early childhood development and in the school system, was always a desire and a recommendation of the state to have all of these, these children under the same roof. So that's now what we're going to hopefully accomplish in the fall. So thank you for your attention. Thank you, Donald.
Thank you, sir. And good luck. One last thing.
Are you going to make it out of here in time? Are you going to make it out of here in time, once again? Can we keep him for longer?
8:00.
[laughing].
Oh, you got, you got, sorry, you have one more thing, or are you all set?
No, I'm good.
All right, we're going to keep him a little longer.
I was holding my breath, as to what that could be.
Sorry, Chris, go ahead.
All right, and again, another issue which isn't simple is the adult daycare. And I just want to be clear that, you know, there's been talk about, are there additional funds needed? And yes, and that's been identified since 2015. So I don't think people should be saying, "Oh, my gosh, we have to address it this week." It doesn't affect the safety and the running of the program on a day-to-day basis, but it's those things that were addressed and reviewed appropriately to say what you would need in the long term. A lot of them are exterior and HVAC, and things such as the generator. So we're looking at that. But what I would like to say is, again, we're taking a very new approach to this, we're looking at it with fresh eyes, we have a new director, we're advertising for a new director of the facility, because the current director had almost, well, a long period ago said she'd be retiring July 1st, so we'll get a new director onboard. We do need a part-time recreation person, and we're looking, I've met last week, and we're going on a tour this week, with Jason Neely, Damian Humphrey, we're looking at the suggestion and recommendation of both sides of the council, to look at integrating, to whatever degree we can, to the benefit of both groups, adult daycare with the senior center. So I would just like, to put all rumors aside, are we considering moving it there? Are we considering expanding the role? Yes, we've been asked to look at it, and I do those things that the council directs, and see if it's something that's recommendable or not. So if people start coming forward to you and are concerned that this program will come to the senior center and impact them, well, it's a possibility. We're looking at that for space and for programs, and for the betterment of both groups. So that's an affirmative, so we don't need to hear any rumors on Facebook, I'm telling you right here, and now that we're going Thursday morning to tour the facility. These facilities are accredited, and in order for us to get reimbursement from the government, we have to stay and keep those accreditation. So anything we do will be done in consultation with the accreditation agency that oversees healthcare, and Damian is reaching out to them. But we're trying to bring more innovative programs, I'm not going to showcase them this evening, but we're hoping to make it a very attractive, warm, and wonderful place that people would feel comfortable and excited to bring their seniors to for a day, or two, or three a week. And there will be some, as we said, there are some obstacles, won't get into them now, we're trying to focus on the positive, but we will know shortly those things that we can accomplish at zero cost, and those things that we need to come and find some financing for. But we're going to give it our best try, we have a lot of good people, I think it's an exciting opportunity, it's such a wonderful cause, it's something you feel good about at the end of the day, to be able to provide this service, and people look at it like they have in the past, and revere it, and talk about it, and that's why I think people have fought to keep it so long, because it was such a marvelous program. So we'll do our best to try to reinvigorate it and make it the best that we can, and we'll keep you posted from week to week, but we're working on it.
Any questions? Moving on to the town attorney report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. I just wanted to update you, since I had mentioned, during our May meetings, that we were having FOI training for staff, and we've completed that, we had two sessions, there were about 50 employees total. And during the second session, Tom Hennick, who is the Public Information Officer for the Freedom of Information Commission, joined me in doing the training. And he mentioned that if you would like additional training in the fall, he's happy to come back. We have had training for boards and commissions typically at night, which focuses on the meetings, and he suggested possibly in the fall, we could do something joint again. So I thought that that was very positive, and it was good to have probably, as I said, about 50 employees all totaled. And that's all I have.
Any questions for the town attorney?
Maria, I just have one question, and this is on the Maple Road on the border of Enfield and Long Meadow. Could we, I know Deb's been working on it with Donald, I'd like a legal opinion on who should be taking care of that road. I know, we try to be a good neighbor, we've reached out, and...
This is something that's come up before?
Yeah.
Because it's not ringing a bell for me.
I know, well...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I want us to legal opinion, because, again, here it is, we talked about this three months ago, and I, in my understanding, they were already supposed to fix, or at least make the road passable. And it is, it's in Long Meadow. And there, I know they're saying that it's our, we have some agreement where we said we would do it. I think we need to, let's get, and if it's, we never had that agreement, I understand the individual is probably a former Enfield employee who's probably saying this, but that's here or there, but I want to have a legal opinion, because it's dragging on, and at some point, I think we need to have a conversation with the town of Long Meadow.
I'll get some additional facts from the manager's office.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's dragging on much too long, and I apologize. Thank you. Any other questions for the town attorney? Moving on to item 12, old business. A, 1 and 2 on page 1, we have none.
Wait, you forgot special committees.
Oh, sorry. Number 11, reporter, special committees of the council.
Counselor Muller?
I have a special update for JFK Building Committee. The RFQ for the construction manager at risk is out. All the closing date is Wednesday, June 12th. There's some other important dates, there's a mandatory walkthrough Thursday, June 20th. The interview and selection committee will meet Saturday, July 13th, and will select the construction manager at risk on Wednesday, July 17th. Thank you.
Counselor Ngire.
Oh, okay. There was a collaboration with the Enfield Rotary Club and Enfield High School. Students constructed and designed over a dozen buddy benches. And for those of you that don't know what a buddy bench is, they're placed in parks at the public and parochial schools of elementary-age kids, and when a student, during recess, and they don't have a friend to play with, they know they can go sit on this buddy bench, and the kids know to go and invite them to come and play. So it's, it's a great collaboration, and it was grant money that allowed them to build all these, so the students did a great job. You'll see them around, I hope everybody gets to take a look at them. Also, the Rotary Club of Enfield honored six special students with a special luncheon at Enfield High. They were each given $50 gift cards, and they had little intros about what they're doing, and the, we have some wonderful students over there, so it was nice to honor them with that. Also, first readers had their award ceremony, and that was today, and it was the largest group that I've ever seen. So congratulations to all those first readers. Also, Enfield High School is going to have their kindness carnival on June 6th, from 4:30 to 7:30.
Anyone else? Moving on to item 12, old business.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, sorry.
Could I just add in, I had something of note to mention, I don't want to forget. We'll put out a press release, but because Jessica's here and members of the public, our next meeting on the 17th, I'm pleased to announce that we're going to be having special guests between 6:00 and 7:00. The special agent in charge of Connecticut FBI, a representative, perhaps, the U.S. Attorney, John Durham, our local state's attorney on the state side, and representatives from our police department. And it's just going to be a presentation on what the Federal Bureau of Investigation, what our state, and what our local people are doing together to cohesively enforce the law. It's, you know, you talk about, and it's a small and local level of the cooperation between the Board of Ed and the council, that makes a big difference. And that cooperation on the state and local and federal level today, in Connecticut with the FBI and the U.S. Attorney, local police and state's attorney, is, again, at an unprecedented level of quality. So they're going to come in and discuss that, I think it'll be a wonderful opportunity to hear it. I think we're very lucky to have them taking time out of their busy schedules to come to Enfield, and we'll put out a press release, but that will be the next meeting, June 21st, But that will be the next meeting, June 21st, between 6:00 and 7:00 here in the council chambers. I think it'll be fascinating.
So it's a special, I guess this is a special committee, but the June, someone asked about the June 12th public hearing.
Yes.
So it is on our website. The picture was actually put on the patch.
Yep.
And I think it's very important for everyone who can make the meeting to go, and I believe, I don't think you have to submit a question before, I think you could.
Well, we put up, it's their show, and to Mr. Young's question, this is of their doing, they're the ones moving forward on it, it's their road, this is nothing that the town recommended or asked for. So it's important to come out and be heard because it is a significant change to that area. And they did say, we put up their direct, their rules for public hearing, they say they're going to have a conversation, but they encourage questions to be submitted in writing first. So if anybody has any of those on the council, I encourage you to get them, to them, it's listed on the website. I would hope, when they say there's going to be a conversation that evening, they'll be willing to have a back and forth and answer people's concerns, but I can't say that for certain because it's a state public hearing, and they play by their own rules.
So just for the record, Counselor Denny and Counselor Bosco came before the Public Safety Subcommittee, and we recommended and made sure that we, A, we wanted to make sure there's a public hearing, and that, then you posted that diagram that's out on, I think, on the patch on our website.
Yes.
And I think if anyone's ever driven on roads to have those, I don't want to use the word, I hate to use this term, it's called suicide lanes. Those things are, those are tough. I mean, it's tough to navigate, and I think it's important for people to be there on a 12th. Yeah. So go ahead.
Yeah. Just one, is it televised?
We're going to. We thought it was important enough that we had funding left for our ETV, and they're going to film it.
All right.
Because I've requested them to, well, we've asked them to, and I believe they're going to.
All right, thank you. I did have a few people inquire about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else to report to the special committee? Okay. Moving on to item 12, old business. Items A1 and 2 on page 1, there are none. Top of page 2, items 3 through 15, there are none. Top of page 3, 16 through 18, again, there are none, no appointments. Item B, appointments by the town manager, 1 through 11 on page 3, there are none. Top of page 4, items 12, 13, and 14, there are none. There are, on item C, under old business, planning and zoning commission appointed, council approved, again, none. Item D, nutmeg solar stays on the table. Is there anything left to discuss? I mean, it's something we should we remove it and take it off the agenda?
It's all over but the building, so.
Right. Pretty much. I mean, the appeal period goes until June 10th, but I don't think there's anything meaningful.
So anyone have an issue to remove item D from old business? To remove from the agenda? Have a motion?
Motion.
By Counselor Denny, seconded by Deputy Mayor Suzak. So this is simply to, all those in favor of moving from the table? Nine in favor, zero against, and this simply is just to remove from the agenda since we know the deal is pretty much done, and I don't, other than when they start constructing.
If there are any issues that surface, we'll bring it back.
Okay. Any other questions there on this item? Do we need a roll call or a show of hands?
No, you made a motion to remove it from the table. You're going to make a motion to remove it from the agenda?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to remove from the agenda?
No motion.
By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Deputy Mayor Suzak. Any discussion on the motion? Is show of hands okay? By show of hands, all those in favor for move from the table? Opposed? We have nine in favors, zero against, it's removed from the agenda. Item E, school roofs, I guess same question, do we really need to keep this on the agenda? Deputy Mayor Suzak?
I'd like to leave it on the agenda, just in case we have an issue that comes up at a different school. Right now, we're looking at the Eli Whitney and the Hazver Memorial, but things change, and I think that we need to have someplace and.
Okay. Fair enough. Everyone okay with that? We'll leave it on the table. Moving to item 13, new business. There is the, A, item A, no consent agenda, again, no appointments. Item B from the town council. Item C, no town manager, council approved. And D, no P&amp;Z commission appointed, council approved. Item 14, items for discussion. Item A, there are no consent agenda. Items B, B1, 2, 3, excuse me, 1, 2, right? Items B1 stays on the table. Items 2, 3, and 4 been moved to miscellaneous. Item 5 stays on the table. Item C, appointments by the town manager, there are none. Items, sorry, is that item C1 and 2? Again, stay on the table. Item D, there's no P&amp;Z commission appointed, council approved. Items Z, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, all moved to miscellaneous. Okay. Pretty good. Item 15, now we move to miscellaneous. Okay, sorry, let me get, just let me bump to that. Where are we? So under item B, B2, appointment for the inland wetlands water course agency, it's a reappointment for Donna Corbin Sobinski. Do I have a motion to, a nomination, excuse me?
I have a motion.
By Counselor Crissati.
Second.
So you have, so the motion is to reappoint?
To motion.
To motion to reappoint by Counselor Crissati, seconded by Counselor Denny. Do I have a motion to close nomination by Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Mueller. All those in favor of closing nomination, by show of hands? Nine in favor, zero against? Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor, let's see, Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Srazza?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Donna Corbin Sobinski.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Is it unanimous?
Moving on to item B3, again, a reappointment for the inland wetlands of Carrie Ann Wagner-Hough. How, excuse me, do we have a nomination to reappoint?
Nominate for reappointment Carrie Ann Wagner-Hough.
By Counselor Denny, seconded by Counselor Crissati. Is there a motion to close nominations? By Deputy Mayor Suzak, seconded by Counselor Srazza. All those in favor of closing nomination, by show of hands? We have nine in favor, zero against? Any questions on the main motion? Hearing unroll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Srazza?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Carrie Ann Wagner-Hough.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Is it unanimous?
Moving on to item B4, another reappointment for the inland wetlands water course agency for the term of Marcy Tolicio. Is there a nomination to reappoint? By Counselor Crissati, seconded by Counselor Keiner. Is there a motion to close nominations by Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Mueller. All those in favor of closing nomination, by show of hands? Nine in favors, zero against? Is there any discussion on the main motion? Hearing unroll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Srazza?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Marcy Tolicio.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Is it unanimous?
Okay, we move on to item E under miscellaneous, again, discussion resolution dedicating the Annex Wrestling Center. Whereas, and again, I apologize in advance if I ruin his name, Ben Alex, if I say that correctly? Alex, sorry. Devoted 11 years as head coach of the Rico Fermi wrestling team, helped to shape the lives of many Enfield youth. And whereas Ben compiled a town record of 70.5 winning percentage and guided the Fermi Falcons to a state open runner-up finish in 1987 while producing an All-American along the way. Whereas Ben also was inducted into the Athletic Hall of Fame in 2016, and whereas Ben Alex has continued to promote, to provide support as a volunteer coach for the past 25 years. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby dedicate the Annex Wrestling Room as Ben Alex Wrestling Center. By Deputy Mayor Suzak, seconded by Counselor Crissati. And Counselor Srazza?
I certainly support this, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure, as we had discussed, did the town receive a letter from the governing board of the Athletic Hall of Fame per our policy? Did we receive that letter or email?
I believe we did receive the letter from the Hall of Fame.
Okay. Great question. That was just to make sure we follow our own policy. Great question.
Yeah. I made sure of that.
Any other questions or comments from, hearing unroll call, please?
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Srazza?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Four.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against?
Moving on under miscellaneous to item F, resolution authorizing the town manager to apply for a grant and enter an agreement with Amplify Inc., whereas Amplify Inc. provides funding to the Youth Services Division, and whereas Youth Services is in the process of submitting a grant application to Amplify Inc. for funds that will be available to the town in the fiscal year 2019, 2020, now there, in the fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town manager, Christopher W. Bronson, is authorized to sign and submit the grant application with Amplify Inc., and be it further resolved that the town manager, Christopher W. Bronson, is authorized to sign an agreement subject to review and approval of the town attorney and a name on behalf of the town of Enfield with Amplify Inc., submitted on May 23, 2019 by Damian Humphrey, the acting director of Social Services. By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Crissati. I don't know if there are any, just.
No, the acting director is here. If there are any questions, a two-year grant, it's for the.
Just brief overview, so people understand why we're applying for the grant, Damian, if you don't mind?
Sure.
Two seconds? I mean, when you send the eyes, I'd like to make sure you get a chance to speak on behalf of the program.
Good evening. My name is Damian Humphrey, acting director of Social Services for the town of Enfield. And this grant is to provide staff with the ability to inform the public on safe practices surrounding the negative effects of substance abuse. So it's a grant that we've applied to before. There's no cost to the municipality, and it helps us to inform our youth and our community on the dangers of substance abuse.
Any questions for Damian? Thank you, sir. I want to make sure, as you're sitting, that you at least got a chance to explain.
Thank you.
He'll stay because he has the next.
All right, so you can sit, and so no further here, no further comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Srazza?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Four.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against?
Moving on to item G under miscellaneous, a resolution authorizing the town manager to apply for a two-year grant and enter an agreement with Connecticut Department of Education. Whereas the Connecticut State Department of Education provides funding to the Youth Service Division, and whereas the Youth Services is in the process of submitting a grant application to Connecticut State Department of Education for funds that will be available to the town in fiscal year 2019, 2020, and fiscal year 2020, 2021. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town manager, Christopher W. Bronson, is authorized to sign and submit the grant application with the Connecticut State Department of Education, and be it further resolved that the town manager, Christopher W. Bronson, is authorized to enter an agreement subject to review and approval of the town attorney and a name on behalf of the town of Enfield with the Connecticut State Department of Education, submitted on May 23, 2019 by Damian Humphrey, acting director of Social Services. By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Crissati. Sir?
Yeah, so again, this is a similar grant that the Youth Services Department has continuously received because of the great work that they do with our community partners and the stakeholders in the Board of Education to work with our youth, their families, all involved, to be able to build capacity to really educate the community on the dangers of substance abuse. And again, this grant, there's no out-of-state travel required for the grant. It's basically cost-neutral, and it does amazing work in really building the capacity within the community to reduce the dangers of substance abuse.
I appreciate the comment, I know out-of-state travel, I appreciate that. And then, second, just curious, does this deliver through the schools? How is it delivered?
It's delivered in partnership with our Youth and Family Services and members of the Board of Education and other community partners like the Enfield Together Coalition.
Is it more of a proactive-type approach? Are we sort of, when we find out maybe a child has experimented?
It's very hands-on. There's a lot of information that's given by the Youth Services Department and the staff to the community, and then as issues and needs arise, the staff is ready to be able to meet those needs with our community partners, of course.
Okay. Any questions from anyone? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Crissati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Keiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Srazza?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Four.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Nine in favor and none against?
Moving on to item H under miscellaneous, resolution amending the solid waste highway division refuge collector job description. Resolved in accordance of Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby amend the job description for solid waste highway division refuge collector, submitted on May 24, 2019 by Steve Belinda, the Human Resource Director. By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Deputy Mayor Suzak. I know this is just a continuation of some of the reorg that we've been doing, Chris. We already posted for the job, correct?
That's the next one.
Okay.
This is, this one is not. This is going to change and actually increase the responsibilities of the position.
All right, got it. Any questions? Counselor Keiner?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the town manager, or maybe Don. This position of refuge collector is a position that's subject to our collective bargaining laws, I presume.
Mr. Belinda is here as well to answer that.
Counselor, it's a pre-existing condition, position. In our.
You're looking ahead to watching the game? That's what the pre-existing condition is?
I'm going to have a, they're already down 1-0 as it is, so. It is a pre-existing position that's here now. What we're trying to do is create more flexibility, because right now, when that person is working on, when that person's on, they can only be on RRM right now. So what we're asking to do is have RRM and Highway Division. So when they're not on the back of a truck on a Tuesday, we have to kind of find work for them, laboring work to do. Now we can move them right to Highway and have them go do other things that we need them to do. So this is purely a flexible thing, and Steve will answer more towards the bargaining unit.
This was negotiated with the union, so they have endorsed it.
That was my question, basically, Steve. I'm sorry. That was my question, basically, to find out how the process works and see if the union just signed off on it. You just answered that, and I'm fine with that. Thank you.
You know, just, they couldn't present this bill if we, they actually didn't have the conversation with the union beforehand, so they wouldn't even got to us if the union didn't sign off on it, just so you know. So it wouldn't even came before us if the union didn't agree to this.
They kind of understand the new guy on the council.
No, no, just a clarification. And also, just since, again, for the new folks, we actually, over the last year and And also, just since, again, for the new folks, we actually, over the last year and a half, across the entire town government, we've done this, where we've given flexibility for the departments to have, again, to have, if someone maybe in a seasonal job can do something else, we've done this across every department, I think, in the town side. This is just a continuation of all the reorganization we've done across every single department that the town has. So I just, again, this has been a consistent, you know, approach. You know, Steve, I don't want to speak for you, but really, this has been, over the last year and a half, we've done this.
Yeah, that's a continuing theme. We have to wear many hats nowadays, and we don't want to get into the, well, that's not my job description, because it's also undone, it's in a lot of job descriptions.
And according to people wanting us to spend their tax dollars as efficiently as we possibly can, getting the most bang for the buck. Councilor Srazza.
Steve, the union signed off on it.
Yes.
They didn't have to sign off on it.
No.
And they didn't ask for more money.
No, they did not.
So you know what? When our employees step up to do something like this, to help us out, whether it's taking zero increase raises or agreeing more duties without more compensation, they need to be recognized and thanked, and I certainly appreciate their efforts.
And I will echo that to the union membership.
Well said, sir. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it. Roll call, please.
Councilor Basco?
Four.
Councilor Crissati?
Four.
Councilor Denny?
Four.
Councilor Kiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mother?
Four.
Councilor Srazza?
Four.
Councilor Suzak?
Four.
Councilor Ungary?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against?
Moving on to item I, I know you gentlemen will stay there. Under miscellaneous, resolution adopting the deputy director operations job description. Resolved in accordance with chapter seven, section two of the town charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt the job description for deputy director of operations. Submitted on May 24, 2019 by Steve Belinda, the Human Resource Director. By Councilor Mueller, second by Councilor Crissati. I think this is, this is sort of, right, the NOVAC report, so if you guys would like to comment, I think it's important for people to understand. Go ahead.
I started drafting this job description, taking pieces of information right out of the NOVAC study, and then I worked closely with Donald as he started gathering other similar type job descriptions from other facilities and employers, and together we pieced together this job description, I think, that hits exactly what we're all looking for here, and it's out there now, and we're starting to get applications for it, and we're scrutinizing their resumes.
I wish, Mr. Mayor, that Jack Sheridan was here, because I think in the past, one of his regrets is, or his concerns was the council didn't listen to the consultants we hired to make recommendations to us, and I think we've done an incredible job of implementing the NOVAC report. It was money well spent, we've implemented many of the recommendations, this is one of the key ones. And again, just so everyone knows, with the commitment and the dollars we're spending for the high school, for the JFK, for the water pollution control, it is essential that we have a person of this caliber and experience who has oversight over our fiscal plant, community, of all of our buildings, so that we make sure that they're being maintained, repaired, and that we have a schedule to do so, so that we don't make these investments. And then in a couple of years, we're spending money on damages because we didn't look after the care and maintenance of our machines and the infrastructure. So that's the type of person we're looking to do this throughout the town, and it will dovetail very nicely with what Facilities is doing with their consultant, to look at all of town buildings, to see what we're keeping, to see what we're jettisoning, and then to really concentrate on maintaining those buildings, and it's part of doing roads and roofs and boilers and chillers, but you don't want to make this investment of tens of millions of dollars on infrastructure and then see it go to waste because we don't have somebody in place to oversee a program, to watch it and do the proper maintenance and repair of it. So that's, that's what this is about.
And I don't know if you gentlemen have any other comments?
I can't possibly improve on that.
We could filibuster for like another half hour, if you're like, there's no rule against it in the town. But I think in seriousness, though, the staff took the NOVAC report seriously, I know we, I think, talked about that last summer, I believe. Also want to recognize, and again, I have to admit, I do, I'm not a sensitive individual, but Councilor Denny, Deputy Mayor Suzak, and Councilor Basco spent, along with your staff, I think, what, the last three meetings? I mean, these are subcommittee meetings where you spent, I think-
Twenty hours.
-multiple hours, not just fifteen, twenty minutes, going over this report, making these recommendations that, again, are hopefully not only make us more efficient, but to some of the comments we had about actually maintaining our infrastructure, and actually having a plan to implement that infrastructure, so we're not twenty years down the road saying, how come we haven't done this for the last twenty years? So I think, people gotta recognize, there's a lot of work that does go in, it's not here in front of the council meeting, that you folks spent with your staff, you know, and really implementing these plans and these changes that are going to move the town forward and address a lot of the issues that we keep hearing that we haven't addressed over the last maybe twenty-five years.
And also, I think this is important to tie in the earlier discussion on the water pollution control, the enhancement and upgrades, and the cost, and why we're putting money aside. The NOVAC report recommended an additional five to six people to be hired in the water pollution control at a cost of five to $600,000 a year. We delayed it in order that we bring on the new superintendent, and he can make an assessment with the director of public works, but that is a cost that is coming, and it's money we have to spend. I remember when we did, a few months back, we had the presentation on the sewer use fee, and we had a gentleman who's a town resident who works in a neighboring community that just upgraded their plant, and he lamented that they didn't put the money and resources and staff to properly run it or maintain it, and already he's seeing the cost increases and repairs because of that short-sightedness. So again, we will hope to look at the NOVAC report and implement it when we're ready, after the new superintendent can assess and make his recommendation for next year. But again, those monies are going to be needed, and that's a half a million dollars a year.
Any questions or comments, anyone? Gentlemen, anything else? Roll call, please, thank you.
Councilor Basco?
Four.
Councilor Crissati?
Four.
Councilor Denny?
Four.
Councilor Kiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mother?
Four.
Councilor Srazza?
Four.
Councilor Suzak?
Four.
Councilor Ungary?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against?
Moving on to item J under miscellaneous, resolution authorizing the town manager, manager or his designate to sign a contract with Operation Fuel. Whereas Operation Fuel, Inc. provides energy assistance services to town residents in need, and whereas Enfield Social Services partners with Operation Fuel, Inc. by processing fuel assistance applications, and whereas Operation Fuel, Inc. will reimburse Enfield Social Services at a rate of $25 per application for processing services, resolved that the town manager or designate is authorized to sign a contract, subject to review and approval by the town attorney, and an aim on behalf of the town of Enfield with Operation Fuel, Inc., and to affix the corporate seal. Submitted ahead of the game on June 17, 2019 by Damian Humphrey, acting director of social services. By Councilor Mueller, second by Deputy Mayor Suzak. Sorry, look, I think it's important to let, if you would-
Yep, Damian's department oversees this.
Some comments on this, this is an important program.
It's been a longstanding and successful program.
I think it's important people understand.
Good evening again. Damian Humphrey, acting director of social services for the town of Enfield. This is an incredible program in partnership with Operation Fuel. This year so far, we have helped eighty households. This is work that our department would be doing anyways, and we've been able to raise close to $2,000. And this money is paid to us by Operation Fuel for helping town residents who need assistance with heating and cooling during the summer months and winter months. So this is revenue the town has been able to generate. We're continuing to, you know, provide excellent service to our community members that come to our offices at 110 High Street, and we work in partnership to be able, with Operation Fuel, to really quickly provide these services to community members when they need it.
Any questions for Damian? Counselor Srazza?
Just real quick, Operation Fuel, where do they get their funding? Is it state money they get?
They get their funding in part from the state, from energy providers like Eversource and us. If you look at your energy bill-
Okay.
-they ask you if you would like to donate a dollar.
Right.
And that's where it comes from, that portion of it.
This is separate from the circuit breaker program, correct?
Correct.
All right. So this is in addition to the circuit breaker program that we provide, which approximately, again, other assistance when it comes to fuel or heat or that sort of thing, for approximately 600 families. So if someone, could someone apply for that credit and this as well?
Well, this is income-based, so during the-
So meaning, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I guess they, they could, but again, Operation Fuel, depending on the income and the needs-
So, so my question, so this is, again, I apologize, I don't want to digress, how do we find more, I know there's more people in eighty that need help with air conditioning and/or heat. How do we, and I can just say, I can go drive down a couple of streets off the top of my head who probably don't even know, how do we reach those people within the grant, you know, money? So we're helping those folks-
That's a good question.
You know, again, as we talk about some of the services, we're trying to fit under our budget, again, the people who are in their homes, how do we find those people and help them? Because I don't, I don't, I think that's an underserviced group of people in our town.
One of the things that we're discussing is better communication and coming up with an outreach, marketing plan within the department for fiscal year 2020, and I think that by us going out to the community and through special events, being able to have flyers and different opportunities to share what we have. So we're already thinking within our department of different ideas to do outreach instead of waiting for people to come to us.
So is it, it's income-based, is it age-based?
It is not.
Do we reach out through the schools?
That I know of, no.
What's the max, in theory, of this grant? So are you saying we have around eighty? Could we have eight hundred?
Actually, that I don't know, because I do believe that, I mean, the funds are limited through Operation Fuel, so I don't know what the cap is for our municipality, but I know that no one is ever rejected for applying through Operation Fuel.
So I pre, I mean, my, again, these are things that we have to figure out a way of reaching people.
Mm-hmm.
So any ideas you folks come up with, we're all for?
And we're open to hearing your ideas as well.
I don't know if anyone, Counselor Srazza, I'll stop talking.
I mean, it seems logical, you must work with the commission of aging in town.
We do.
Right, so they would probably have some good, the Triad program over at the senior center?
Yep.
Okay, great.
So if this came out, I apologize, you all said, what about, so we set up a blight committee. What about, so I am not trying to make the leap, but what if, again, through that blight committee, someone has been fined for whatever reason? Is that another avenue we can look into where maybe, again, if someone maybe not be mowing their lawn as well as they should, maybe there's an issue where they can't, they simply can't take care of the house? So maybe they are, you know, that's another avenue to think through.
Sure. I mean, again, if there are ways that we can receive these referrals, we can certainly have our social worker meet with them, but I think usually, you know, the eighty usually know that the service is there-
Right.
-and they come to us, but I think we have to-
I agree, I think-
-do a better job of outreach.
And I think so, I don't know if it's as simple as, maybe we put it on your front, the website, and a school website as well?
Well, that's in part. I think not everyone has access to-
Good point.
-internet, not everyone has a computer or a phone, so we're trying to figure out of ways to identify times and staff that can do outreach, and that's something that I love to do as well, so.
So that put it in a spot. What about, I mean, we hear public service announcements of, you know, if you see something, say something, simple as that.
Yep.
We must know a neighbor, everyone must know a neighbor who probably could use the help. You know what I mean? So I'm just saying, maybe something as simple as that, if you know a neighbor, give them the number and call. I don't know if that, you know, you provided on, for us to have as a number, I mean, I don't even-
There isn't a website.
Right.
And-
If you could send them, maybe after me, send the council the information of where we, they could go get that program, the-
Sure.
-if it's a, who's the contact in town, and so then we know who it is.
Okay.
If we see something, hey, here's a number you want to call. I mean, I certainly would be an advocate for it.
Sure, I can provide that to the council.
Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay.
Good answer, though. Any other questions? Counselor Crissati?
I have a, an idea. I know that the Commission on Aging is going to be sending out a booklet-
Yep, the blue book.
-and, you know, the blue book, and I think that would be a perfect spot to be able to put something in, to get that information out, which would be part of your outreach program.
Great. And I think that's great, but I think, you know, the lady, the lady who was here earlier, Mrs. Crissatelli, again, could maybe, I mean, so it's not just seniors that need the help, and it sounds like it's not an age-based program.
It's not. We get-
Right.
Families, individuals.
Right. So that's what I think we have to figure out, it's not just an age-based program. Okay. Thank you, any other questions? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Basco?
Four.
Councilor Crissati?
Four.
Councilor Denny?
Four.
Councilor Kiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Councilor Mother?
Four.
Councilor Srazza?
Four.
Councilor Suzak?
Four.
And Councilor Ungary?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against?
Moving on to item K under miscellaneous, resolution authorizing creation of the Midtown Enfield Tax Increment Financing District and adopting the Midtown Enfield Tax Increment Financing District Master Plan for the district. Whereas Connecticut General Statute 7-339 CC-7-339 KK inclusive authorize municipalities in Connecticut to create tax incentive financings, also known as TIF districts, for the purpose of incentivizing economic development and infrastructure, and supporting employment, housing, economic growth, and other projects. Whereas the proposed district, be known as the Midtown Enfield Tax Increment Financing District, also known as the district, will be created pursuant to the Act and the Midtown Enfield Tax Increment Financing District Master Plan, attached herein to as Exhibit A, again, also known as the district master plan, which details the creation, structure, development, financing, operation, and maintenance of the district, and whereas pursuant to the district master plan, the town of Enfield, also known as the town, will capture 50% of the future increased assessed property values within the district for an anticipated term of 20 years and utilize up to 100% of the real property tax revenues generated from such increased property values, along with private funds to fund infrastructure improvements, economic development programs, traffic and road improvements, streetscaping, branding, and administrative costs. And whereas the town is in need of economic development and infrastructure improvements in the Midtown Enfield area, and whereas there is a need to provide continuing employment opportunities for the citizens of Enfield and the surrounding region to improve the broader, to improve and broaden the tax base in the town, and to improve the economy of the town and the state of Connecticut. Whereas a portion of the real property within a district, in the proposed district, is one, in a substandard, unsanitary, deteriorated, deteriorating or blighted area; two, in need of rehabilitation, redevelopment, or conservation work; three, suitable for industrial, commercial, residential, mixed-use, or rental uses, downtown development or transit-oriented development; and whereas, as shown in Exhibit B of the district master plan, the original assessed value of the taxable property within the district does not exceed 10% of the total value of taxable property within the town as of October 1, 2018. And whereas the creation of the district will help to provide continued employment for the citizens of the town, the surrounding region, to improve and broaden the tax base in the town, and to contribute to the economic growth and well-being of the town and the state of Connecticut. What is two-page here? Whereas the establishment of the district would not be in conflict, I didn't realize that, in the town charter, and whereas, established district would not be in conflict with town charter, and whereas the district master plan was transmitted to, in a study of the district master plan and a written advisory opinion was required by the Act as requested from the Town Planning and Zoning Commission at least ninety days prior to the authorization and establishment of the district. Whereas the town councils had a public hearing on the proposal to establish the district in accordance with the requirements of the Act, with at least ten days prior notice published in the newspaper of general circulation within the town. Whereas the town councils considered the comments provided at the public hearing both for and against the district. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council hereby authorizes the creation of the Midtown Enfield Tax Increment Financing District, the boundaries of which are included in the district master plan. Be it further resolved, the Enfield Town Council adopts the Midtown Enfield Tax Increment Financing District Master Plan, attached hereto as Exhibit A, and be it further resolved, the Enfield Town Council hereby authorizes that 50% of the future increased assessed property values within the district shall be retained as captured assessed value in accordance with the district master plan, and up to 100% of the real property tax revenues generated. For such captured assessed value may be, for such captured assessed value may be used to fund the various costs and improvements set forth in the district master plan, submitted by Lori Whitten, Director of Development Services, on May 28, 2019. By Counselor Mueller, by Counselor, second by Counselor Denny. I'm ready to retire. Folks have the floor, I think I said it all, so I'm not sure what's left.
Yeah, there's not much more to add there, just as a quick, brief, the way this works is for the general public is, right now, let's say, a parcel has the assessed value of $100, okay, and it gets taxed on that. So that gets basically frozen, and as there's some capital improvement on that, there's increased assessed value, and half of that would go back to the general fund, and then the other half would go back to the master plan, TIF area. So it's just, that's the real basics of it.
Any questions? I mean, I know it's been, I think, a couple of months, this was sent to the P and Z in March. So any questions? Counselor Kiner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I plan on supporting this resolution, but just, just a comment, I think it's fair to say that there might very well be some blighted areas within a TIF district that the government would go, would allow for condemnation through eminent domain, which is, to us, is a very sensitive subject, obviously. My concern is that if we look at Kilo in New London, that was in a TIF district, and I'm just wondering, is there anything within, you know, I understand the general idea of TIF, I don't know all the intricacies of it, though. Is there anything within a TIF district that would allow for easier condemnation and taking homes by eminent domain, or is Kilo just a, just an oddball type of thing that just happened, just a coincidence?
I'll answer that. We have no intention of invoking eminent domain to utilize our TIF. As you said, that's a one-off, Kilo is a unique circumstance. We want developers to come in and to want to invest and enhance the district, and we'll use the proceeds in the proportion that the director said, but we have no, there's never been a discussion or even a mention of condemnation in connection with our implementation of the TIF, and it's something that I think would be extraordinarily remote, if not something we would never do. It's never been discussed. It's not part of our plan or our policy.
The funds will be used through the use of the advisory council, so there's going to be a TIF advisory board, rather, and then they advise the town council as to how to recommend-
I think that's really what I wanted to hear, and just, Kilo was an anomaly that had happened in a TIF district. Thank you.
Yes.
All set? Counselor Basco?
Bill, no matter what, you'd have to vote for it. So if they're going to condemn something, or take eminent domain, we would have to, we would have to say yes or no, just like we did the other night. So we're the protection for the people in the town. You know, from what I understand, this has been a goal since 2003, and, you know, it's just, sometimes, you know, even with like the daycare, you have to do things, and some things may have the little dips, and then you're going to have the ups, but eventually, if you don't try something, you'll never get nowhere. And all the poking at this, and, I mean, it's been on the agenda since I got on in 2007, and it's finally coming, so hopefully it works. If it don't, we'll know soon enough, but, you know, I mean, I think it, you know, it looks promising, so I don't see where it's going to hurt either. Thank you.
All set? Counselor Crissati?
Yeah, I think over the last year or so, maybe more, the last couple of years anyway, with the, all the hard work that your committee, and you in particular, Nelson, have done on this, and, you know, it's been through planning and zoning and developmental services, and everybody's been looking at this for quite some time. This is a good piece of work, and I think, you know, as a town, we should be very proud
Nelson Toriso, Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development. I also like to acknowledge our Economic Development Commission. They did a great job in reviewing the policy and the, this master plan. So, I'd like to acknowledge them tonight as well.
You know, and I think we sat here a year ago, right? A year ago. And we were, at the time, two years away, I remember the conversation, two years away. So, the credit goes to your staff. Again, you heard the debate on the council. We wanted to move forward with this. We didn't want to wait two years down the road. We were able to use the money to get a consultant to help us get us there with our staff, with the Economic Development Commission, with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, multiple different levels of government involved to make something happen where we hope, to Counselor Bosco's point, that this, again, generates something that we maybe weren't going to be able to generate prior to having this. And I think, again, we did it within less than a year. So, I wish we could move quicker sometimes. But multiple different levels of government commented on this. And volunteer levels of government commented on this. So, it wasn't just elected officials. So, I think that's the other thing that people, this is really an accelerated, from really, I think, of July of last year to where we are now. So, I think kudos to your folks, to your, the Economic Development Commission, to Planning and Zoning Commission, your staff, and of course, the consultant that we hired who helped us get along. And of course, for the Town Council for pushing the policy. So, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, folks. Roll call, please.
Councilman Bosco.
Four.
Councilman Crisati.
Four.
Councilman Denny.
Four.
Councilman Kiner.
Four.
Chairman Ludwig.
Four.
Councilman Mueller.
Four.
Councilman Srazza.
Four.
Councilman Suzak.
Four.
And Councilman Ungary.
Four.
We have nine in favor, none against.
Moving on to Item M under miscellaneous, adopting the Town of Enfield Tax Increment Financing Policy. Be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt the Town of Enfield Tax Increment Financing Policy dated June 2019, submitted on May 30, 2019 by Lori Whitten, Director of Development Services. By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Crisati. I don't know, as if anyone has any of the comments they didn't get prior. I think we're good. Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Kiner.
Four.
Chairman Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Counselor Srazza.
Four.
Counselor Suzak.
Four.
And Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Well done. Moving on to Item N, excuse me, Item M under miscellaneous, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to sign the Amendment to Agreement with the Hazardville Institute Conservancy Society, Inc. And I apologize for ruining conservancy. Whereas, the Hazardville Institute Conservancy Society, Inc., and the Town of Enfield, fully executed agreement on May 2, 2017 regarding the town's 30,000 appropriation funds for the Hazardville Institute Rehabilitation Project. Whereas, Paragraph 8, Subparagraph A of the agreement provided that the Conservancy shall complete all work as set forth in the plan no later than two years after the execution of this agreement. And whereas, Paragraph 8, Subparagraph D of the agreement provides that, in the event of unforeseen events resulting in a delay of the project, the parties hereto may be, by written amendment to this agreement, extend the time for completion of the project. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council authorized the Town Manager to sign the Amendment to the Agreement with the Hazardville Institute Conservancy Society, Inc., subject to review and approval of the Town Attorney, submitted by Nelson Toriso, Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development, on May 9, 2019. By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Deputy Mayor Suzak. Sir.
Good evening. When I first got on board here in town, Chris asked me to reach out to the Conservancy folks. And I had to set up a meeting with them. Most of them are here in attendance tonight, Rich, Gretchen, and Bill, regarding this project. And when I first met with them, this building is in the heart of Hazardville. It's in the National Register District. It's a contributing resource. So, I spoke to them about state programs to assist in the final phase of their project. So, I told them to hold off on the final phase of work to pursue state financial assistance. So, we had the State Historic Preservation Office meet with us. And we're discussing potential programs to assist them with the final phase, which consists of electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and finishing work. They completed the addition, which they needed to do as part of ADA accessibility, bathrooms, lullar lift, elevator. So, things are moving forward. They just need some more time now to pursue some additional funding in order to leverage the money that we've been, that we've provided them to finish this project. So, the purpose of this resolution is to get an extension on the agreement.
Any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Suzak.
I'm going to vote in favor of it. You know, as far as, family members of mine have been involved for at least a decade on this. And there's been people who have been involved 40 years. And I know this is a really close, knit Conservancy of their members. And I can't tell you the sorrow that these people have when a member that's been working on this for 30 or 40 years passes. And our last one to have passed was Tony Secundo. And he was actually the person who signed the lease for the Conservancy. So, it's just a matter of, it would be really nice to see a historic building open back up while some of the members that have worked for a long time can see this. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Crisati.
The, says $142,000 is going to be needed to finalize the final phase of this.
$142,000 is what's left in the grant, the town funding, out of the 300. $158,000 has been spent to date on the restoration or the addition to the building.
So, this, all of this money is going to be used for the?
The remaining $142,000 is going to be used towards the final phase, which is the interior utility work that needs to be done, the electrical, the plumbing, and the, you know, the utility work and the actual finishes in the building itself, within the building.
So, no other money is going to be needed?
Well, that's what we're looking into, obtaining state historic grant funding to match the town money. Because there is a shortfall to finish this. So, we need additional subsidy from the state. And there's, since this is in a, it's a national, it's in the National Register of Historic Places, it's a contributing resource, it's eligible for this money. So, there's money readily available.
Have we applied for that money yet?
We have met with the state. We've provided them with the plans. And we are ready to pursue an application. Unfortunately, the person in charge of reviewing that program has left her position with the state. And they're trying to fulfill that position. So, we're hoping in the next month or so, they refill that position. But we, I have been in talks with them. But unfortunately, something, it was an unfortunate situation, unforeseen situation. We are ready to submit an application for this. And they need to refill that position in order to take on any new applications.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Kiner.
To follow up on Mr. Crisati's comments, what we're voting on today is simply to grant an extension for two more years. Is that right?
That is correct.
From your contact with the state, do you see any potential problem with getting this extension?
There's no, the state, this is a local agreement, nothing to do with the state whatsoever.
Okay. I'm sorry. The last question, then, is assuming that all the funds are used, do you have any, and you might have already answered it, and I just didn't hear it. Do you have any estimate as to how much it's going to cost beyond the $300,000?
I would probably defer to the Conservancy to answer that. I'm not, we're not sure the exact numbers of what the final phase is going to cost until they get the bids in. But they've had, they have, they've had an architect, obviously, prepare the plans and provide an estimate. They can probably discuss that.
Because what this council's voting on is the 300, is using the $300,000 from bonding. We're not voting to spend money beyond that $300,000. I'm just kind of curious as to how much it might cost beyond that $300,000. If there's anyone from the Conservancy that can respond to that, I appreciate that.
Welcome. Rich Suzak, 35 South Road, Enfield, Connecticut. In terms of, I don't have, unfortunately, the performer with me or our estimate with me. But what we're anticipating is that we have a shortfall of about...
Mike.
Oh. What we anticipate is that we have a shortfall of around $100,000. So, what we, $100,000. So, we have talked to the state. And they had indicated that potentially, we could get a matching grant for that $100,000 as long as we have the funds in our pocket to pay for the entire, I guess, renovation to, you know, for a $200,000 renovation or upgrade of the building. And once we finish that phase of the work, they would refund us $100,000, which would allow us to finish the last $100,000 that we need. So, that, I guess what that means is that...
Yeah, sorry.
So, it's a reimbursable grant. So, you can, you can, if you qualify, there's $100,000. So, but we have to have the $100,000 in hand.
Right.
So, we have 142,000 remaining from the original $300,000.
That's what you're using the extension for, correct? But you need another $100,000.
No.
No.
So, we need, we need another, like, $60,000, which we have.
Right.
Which we have fundraised. So, we have that in our accounts. So, we would have to have, if we qualified for the $100,000, which is the maximum amount that they will grant, we would have to have everything. And then, when the project is completed, then the state comes and reviews it and makes sure that we've done everything that we were supposed to do according to the plan and according to their criteria. And then, we would be reimbursed.
For the $100,000?
Correct. But we have to have it all in hand.
So, you need, so...
So, we need to have $200,000.
Aside from this extension, you still need almost $100,000?
No, we need $60,000. That would, 142 and 60...
So, you're asking the state for $40,000 more?
No. We would be asking for $100,000.
Exactly. That's $40,000 more than you need.
No, it's $60,000.
No?
No. Basically, I guess...
You have $100,000, you have $100,000.
We have...
You're asking for, you're asking for an extension. I understand that.
Correct.
The state will give you another $100,000 if you match another $100,000.
Correct. But we have to pay for $200,000 in total prior to the state giving us $100,000. Because right now, we're anticipating it's going to take us...
But you're short $100,000.
We're 300, it's going to take us $300,000 to finish.
How much?
300,000.
So, another 300,000?
No.
Another 200,000?
No. Because we have 140 from the town. We have our coffers, we have about $80,000. So, that's 220. So, that, so with that $220,000, if we get a grant from the state for $100,000, basically, we could, we would allocate 200, a phase that was, would be worth $200,000 to complete a certain portion of the work. That would leave another $100,000 to finish. And what we would need to do is we would need to accomplish and end that first phase for $200,000. At that point, the state would come in and look at what we've done. And as long as we have complied with all their criteria, they would reimburse us $100,000, which would give us the $300,000 that we need to finish. So, basically, what we're doing is we're leveraging our 140 plus our coffers to engage, you know, for a final, a next-to-final phase of $200,000. And then, once we finish that phase, we get $100,000 from the state.
Sounds like a tap dance to me, but I don't know.
But that's how the state works.
So, let me ask you this question. How much longer is this project going to go?
We're anticipating that it should not go longer than the period...
Because it's been about 40 years by now, a money pit that we've been throwing money into it. This wasn't a grant. I noticed that this was not a grant, $300,000 grant. This money came from the Town Council when we saved money when we did away with the guards in schools. And I was on the council when we did that $300,000. It was an amendment to the budget. So, it wasn't, what you say here is, the Town of Enfield grant for, wasn't really a grant. We gave you, yeah, we gave you a grant of $300,000 was money left over from the guards. This has been, well, I've been on the council six years, and you still don't have a certificate of occupancy. What is this building going to be used for once we get it done? Just to look at it nice? And it's going to be a nice Hazardville Institute and a nice building to drive by and say, geez, that place is wonderful. Colonel Hazard built it, and it's been in our history forever. Are we ever going to use it for anything?
Yes, we are. And I'm sorry that you feel that way. The building is intended to be used by the community. It is intended to be an active place. It is intended to highlight the history of Hazardville, the gunpowder factory, and...
It's only a museum?
Partly a museum, partly a meeting place.
Did you ever think of trying to merge yourself with the Enfield Historical Society?
No, we're a separate, we're a separate entity. And Tony Secundo...
So, you have nothing to do with the Historical Society at all?
So, at this point in time, no, we don't. Tony Secundo, who was formerly...
See, I have in my mind that I have a building...
Can you let me answer the question, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, Tony Secundo, who was formerly our president, was also the president of the Historical Society. We do work with members of the Historical Society, and, but we have separate missions at this point in time. So, our mission really has been to restore the building. So, there was probably 20 years where nothing happened. And the organization reconstituted itself in 2000. And since then, we've been very active. And I think we've accomplished a lot.
Well, we have...
And we're very grateful for the $300,000 grant.
We have a building here, we have a building here in Thompsonville that we tried to revitalize. And we're going to be hitting him with a wrecking ball in a short period of time.
Well, we're...
The Strand Theater.
And it's unfortunate, when we got reorganized, we actually did get some assistance from the Save Our Stand group to get our 501(c)(3) designation. And I have no control over...
So, you don't really, you know, I'm not, I'm not against this whole project. What I'm against is that it's been going on forever and ever. And what I'm afraid of is that at some point in time, someone from this organization is going to come here and ask me, as I probably won't be here as a councilman, but ask this council, again, for another grant for some money, again, for, to revitalize this building. And so, again, you know, all these years, I don't know how much money you've raised over the course of time, but it just seems to me like it's a money pit. There's never been a certificate of occupancy. I was in it just recently, too long ago, we had a tour of the building. There's no, you have bricks inside, there's no walls. You can see through the top floor to the bottom. I played basketball there years ago. So, I mean, this is going to pass. There's not a problem. But I don't think I'm going to vote for it. Thank you.
So, we have essentially done all the structural work to stabilize the building and to get it to the point where we can, where we can do the finished work. And unfortunately, it takes time. But, you know, it's, we've had a lot of people, businesses, who have assisted us, who have donated services. It's not, it's not just been about getting money. There have been many, many local businesses that have assisted us. And through the course of this last restoration, we have worked with local businesses. We've worked with Kelly for that. We got windows, not directly through A.W. Hastings, but we did get Marvin Windows from one of their suppliers because A.W. Hastings is a distributor and could not sell them to us. We used a local contractor to put the addition on. So, not only have we restored a building, but there's an economic factor here where we've been able to work with our local businesses. So, I don't think it's just a money pit.
And Enfield Concrete Transit also donated some of their materials for us. And in terms of, everything takes time. You have to realize that, you know, and everything takes money. We've been working very hard to try to get grants. We've been working very hard to accomplish anything. In terms of, you know, you can't compare us to the Strand because we have upgraded our facade. In terms of, if you actually look back to 15 years ago, the whole place was falling apart. All the bricks were falling off the building. There was, you know, a fire escape that was not functional. And we stabilized the entire exterior of the building. We stabilized the roof system. We stabilized all the framing system. It's a viable, structurally sound building. So, when you're comparing us with the Strand, you're comparing apples and oranges. It's not even close to being, you know, the same in terms of, and we keep going forward in terms of, we're not taking steps back, we're taking steps forward. But taking those steps forward always takes time, especially if you have limited finances. So, that, that's our constraint, is that we have limited finances. And we have a building that was built for the 1860s, and this is 2019. So, what we need to do is we need to recognize the fact that, you know, times have changed and conditions have to change for, you know, us to go forward. So, that, at that point, we, you know, we will move forward, and we are moving forward. We're not moving backward.
And virtually, every cent that we have spent on this building has been for bricks and mortar. The, as far as the overseeing and management of the project, that has essentially been done by Rich Suzak and myself. So, we haven't been paying anybody to manage the project.
That's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I saw the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Denny. And I really hope that you get the two-year, the two-year extension goes through, and you'll come back in two years and tell us the building's operational, it's no longer a facade, and we'll all be happy about that. But let me just say one more thing. I'm afraid math was never my strong suit, either in high school or in college. So, can you really simplify this for me? After the $300,000 is used, how much money will you be asking for approximately from either this Town Council or the next Town Council? Is there any figure on that?
I have no idea.
All I need is a dollar figure, just approximately, and I'll be happy.
We have never asked for any money from the Town Council. In terms of, that was given to us via the grant from a previous councilor thought that it would be beneficial for the entire town to benefit from us being able to move forward. In terms of, we did not actively come in and say, you know, please give us money. We did not bang on anybody's door, we did not beg for money. It was given to us as a grant, as, as most towns should, should recognize the fact that when people are moving forward, and when people need a little hand, you have to lend a helping hand. And, and we're very grateful that the town had enough foresight to see the fact that we were moving forward, and, and that, you know, they were beneficial to give us a hand. If, if you turn your back on everybody that was trying to do some good in this town, you would have nothing that, that would be going forward in this town. So, in that vein, I think that the town did a very beneficial thing to go forward, and to recognize the fact that we are progressing forward.
I commend you, I commend you for your hard work. And I don't think you heard my original comment. I am supporting this resolution. And I cert, I support what you're doing, it's a great activity, and I'm, within a two-year period or whatever, I wanna see that building used. So I thank you for your work. All I'm asking for, it's a simple question, and I'm not sure I got the answer.
We are not gonna ask for any more money.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I, I think until we go out to bid, we won't know the answer.
The resolution states that the $300,000 is not gonna be enough. That's a no-brainer. It says it right there in the resolution. So you'll be coming to somebody for more money. That's another no-brainer. How much are you coming, how much do you plan on coming to for the town? Not the state. I know the state's, you, you're looking for another grant. Let's assume you get the grant, and that's fine. Are you asking, or will you be asking, for any money from this town council or the next town council? That's all I'm asking.
I, I don't think we really know. I think that, I think that the answer is, is that the closer we get to completion of our building, the easier, I think, our fundraising will be from, from the community. That people want to support something where they see an end game. And so, at, at this point in time, fundraising, well, for, for any nonprofit, for any organization, fundraising's not easy. There, there's just not a lot of money out there.
Sure.
But I think that the closer we get, that there are people that are very supportive of what we've done, and we're hoping that when, when they see that we're really close, that, that they'll be able to open up their pocketbooks.
Well, just, you know, count me as one of the supporters. I mean, years ago, people would ask me, what's happening with that building? And I would say, give it time, it's gonna happen, it's going to happen. And eventually, it will. So, I don't want you thinking that anyone of us on the council are opposed to what you're doing. We're not. At least, talking for myself, I, I approve of what you're doing. I think it's a wonderful activity, and I'd love to see this building put to use. All I'm asking for is just dollars and cents, and Gretchen, you answered, when you said you didn't know, and that's, that's fine, you don't know how much, you know, is gonna be asked, and I can understand that.
I think once, once we put this next phase out to bid, we're, we're going to know what it's, what it's gonna cost. At this point, we, we just don't know.
Okay.
I mean, the last phase that we did, we were very fortunate that we debated whether or not to, to start it before the winter, and we talked with our contractor, and we decided to do it. And it turned out to be a, a good decision, because the cost of materials went up considerably. So, we, we save money by, by moving forward. So, we just never know.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Because we, we do-
Councilor Bosco, we need, we need to move on.
Okay, so let me get this right. You can't, you're sort of stuck, because you can't spend $145,000, because you need that money in the bank, so you can have a matching grant.
Correct.
So, that's the reason why you can't spend the money, or you would be further down the road with the construction.
Correct.
So, so what I, I don't know if there, anyone's understanding is that's why you can't. And then the next problem is, you know, like the Strand, I wish we had a committee that would've worked for 40 years trying to save that building, because I would love to go watch Lassie come home again there.
I wish we did too.
You know, but if no one tried it, it never's gonna get anywhere. I mean, you gotta give the will of the, the commission or committee a lot of credit for, for pursuing over this for, for many years. And to price, to get, get a price, I mean, how you gonna know? There, there could be a tariff on the one piece you need.
That's right.
And, you know, the, the, the price, project's gonna go up. I mean, I remember when we were doing roads, when the recession was here, we were getting a heck of a deal on the roads. You know, a million dollars went $2 million. Now, a million dollars only gets you $500,000. So, you know, the time is gonna make the difference, and the longer that time goes by, the worse it may be. So, I, you know, I'm gonna support this. I think it's a good cause. And, you know, to the point about coming for extra money, you'll never know till you put the last nail in, what the, the project's gonna be. And realistically, it's up to the Levine council people, either tell you they're gonna give you money, or pound sand. And, and, but you can't be held to a guarantee right now, when you don't know. What if you're $5,000 away, and you can't raise it to open the door? You know, things come up, so I'm gonna support this. I, I'm hoping that you can get this thing done sooner than later. And I wanna thank you for the advice, because that would've been good advice, because I would've spent the money and then not had any money for a matching grant. So, you know, that was the forethinking. You know, just like people say, we, we don't think ahead, but that's thinking ahead. Don't spend the money yet, you know, but on the other hand, you're jeopardizing, losing the time of the two years, the money run out, so, you know, we have to give it to you, because if not, all you're waiting for, and trying to get the other grant, would, would be in vain. So, thank you.
Counselor Srazza.
I actually was debating whether or not I should ask this question, because I didn't wanna muddy the waters, but at this point, I don't think I could. So it's very simple to me. This resolution this evening is not asking for any money. All the resolution is doing is saying you need a two-year extension.
Correct.
That's the issue before us tonight.
That's exactly correct.
So, hopefully you get that $100,000, hopefully you don't need any more money. But if you do, and you come back, that's the time we'll do this debate. I'm not sure why we're having it tonight. Tonight is simple. You need a two-year extension and no money.
Correct.
Great. I'm good.
Captain Mayor Suzak.
I guess there's been a lot of chatter here. For me, I like, I wanna clarify for everybody who doesn't understand all the nuances of historic buildings and historic preservation, and all these, you know, 503(c)s or whatever they are. The Hazardville Institute is owned by the town of Enfield. It is a town building. These are citizens that are dedicated to a town building. Now, let's take the other building, our other pet building, the Strand. The Strand was not owned by the town until they took it for tax liability. The 503(c) that was in charge of that did not maintain their status as a nonprofit. They went into tax default. And the minute that we have it, and we have it now, we don't know what to do with it. And you know, all of us, Bob, Bill, me, Joe, we sit on facilities, and we're scared to death of what the next thing that's gonna come before us is, that's a town building. And for one, thank you for taking care of a town building, that I don't care about the roof leaking there. And I'll tell ya, when the roof leaked there, this, this committee went up and fixed the roof. And when they needed money, because they did get money once from the town, they got a loan, they paid it back. So, you know, there's been a lot of things that have happened, and the initiative for this building was started by the state. That's why it will be half-community use. But we all have to sit back and say, how do all the puzzle pieces fit together? And how does it work? And I'll support this. And they make me clean all the time, too.
Counselor Denny.
I'm glad you brought that up, Donna, because if I had $300,000 that we sunk into this building, I could've fixed Hazardville Memorial, and Barnard, and every roof school that still leaks with that money.
Ed, the roofs are 1.2 million.
I'm supporting this, because it's an extension, it costs the town any money, but I just wanted to bring up that point. If I had the $300,000, I could've fixed every roof in Enfield. Or almost. Two schools, anyway.
Well, again, we're not here to debate what prior councils have done. I mean, so, my only, my only point to you folks, agree that there was a committee for the Strand, and actually, if you recall, Governor Rowland at the time came to Enfield, and I think he donated four, I think it was $400,000 of state money, or $350,000, whatever it was, at that point back in the 90s, to move the Strand forward. And again, for whatever reason, it just didn't, didn't work, and it didn't happen. I, I don't wanna comment, other than that's just a fact of the matter. And you're, you know, you're right, you didn't ask for the $300 grant, it was given to you from the town. You're managing it very tightly, and I know, I think Councilman Bosco said it best. You'd love to move forward, but actually, you got a chance, if you halt for a little bit, to actually get some state matching grants from the historical grants that maybe in past, we didn't know were out there. And again, good news, we hired someone from the state who understands those grants are out there, and are helping you folks. So, again, I think to what Councilor Bosco said, we're actually trying to be proactive, even if we have to take a step back a little bit, to, to the point of getting that matching grant, is to finish the project, not to ask for more money from the town. That's the point, right?
Yes.
So I support this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and we are very grateful for, for your support, and for the original $300,000. And we have worked very hard to make it go as far as possible.
Mr. Mayor, if I'd known there was so much interest in this, I would've put it down for a special six to seven o'clock meeting, so we could've had a presentation. I think it would've been interesting, and maybe we'll do it in the future, when they get this grant. And in the famous words of Red Edgar, I think he would say, it's now time to move the question.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Srazza?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against?
Moving on to item N. Resolution setting a public hearing for the 2019 Neighborhood Assistant Act. Resolve the Enfield Town Council hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, June 17th, at 6:50 p.m., to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the 2019 Neighborhood Assistant Act proposals, submitted on May 28, 2019, by the Town Manager's Office. By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Denny. Says 18, you just have to amend to make it, say 19 on the, it says 18. Isn't that, again, just, that's what it says, at least, on this, my packet. Yeah, prepare, I said, prepared by a mayor. Any discussion on the resolution? Here we go, roll call, please.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Srazza?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Four.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Eight in favor, none against?
Moving on to item O. A resolution authorizing the Town Manager to enter into a lease agreement with Educational Resources for Children, Inc. Whereas the current lease for the Educational Resource for Children, Inc., ERFC, began September 1, 2012, expires on June 30, 2019. And whereas ERFC, Inc., has requested a new lease for a term of five years, for the purpose of operating a before and after-school childcare program in various rooms in the following town-owned school facilities. One, Henry Barnard Elementary School. Two, Prune Scrandall. Three, Enfield Street, Street School. Four, Hazardville Memorial. Five, Edgar H. Parkman. Six, Eli Whitney. Whereas the Town Hall, Town, Enfield Town Council supports the lease of specific rooms within these town-owned school facilities for the aforementioned purpose, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Manager, Christopher David Bronson, is empowered to execute the lease between the Town of Enfield and the Educational Resource for Children, Inc., subject to review and approval of the Town Attorney, by, approved by Kasha Purcell, Assistant Town Manager, on May 23, 2019. By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Crisati. I don't think there's any question, I think you've, sorry-
I just have one, because I'm not sure-
I just asked Counselor Crisati, he said yes, but we have increased the fees that we're charging them for, for the facilities.
Yes, we reviewed this. We had estimate, estimates from finance to see what the incremental increase should be from the last time the lease was signed in 2012. We also have included in this lease a 3% increase going forward each year to address that. I would like to say that ERFC has been a wonderful partner. They've worked very hard with Kasha on this. They offer a wonderful service to the children of our town, we're glad to have them. We're glad to continue this collaborative effort with them going into the future, and we thank them for their cooperation during the negotiation of this renewal of the lease. As you know, we've been very diligent in looking at all leases, and looking at funding and, and use of our fields and facilities, and looking at leases to make sure it's fair to both us and the residents of the town. And I commend ERFC for stepping up to the plate and agreeing to the terms of this lease. I think it's fair for them and for us. And again, they do a wonderful job for the children of Enfield, we thank them.
I'll set it. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Srazza?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Four.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against?
Now, the most exciting resolution of the night, saves it for last. Resolve, resolution, item P in miscellaneous. Resolution canceling special, excuse me, selected regular meetings in July and August. Resolve that the Enfield Town Council does hereby cancel the regular meetings of the council scheduled for July 15, 2019, and August 18, 2019. Prepared by the Town Manager's Office, moved by Deputy Suz, Deputy Mayor Suzak, seconded by Counselor Ungary. I'm not sure if there's any discussion, but if anyone would like to discuss?
Well, if you don't pass it, you'll be, I'll just tell you, if you don't pass it, you'll be here alone on those dates.
Exactly.
All right, so July 15, August 18.
Set the, the second meetings in each month. So the first meetings we'll have, it's the second meetings that are canceled.
No meetings in July, the second, the second meeting.
Roll call, please.
Or August.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Denny?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Chairman Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Srazza?
Four.
Counselor Suzak?
Four.
And Counselor Ungary?
Four.
Nine in favor, none against?
Moving on to item 16, Public Communications. Would anyone like to speak for the council at this time? Rich.
Dr. Trenier, 206 Abbey Road. I watched a little bit this evening in regards to the presentation for the Stowe Building. That's kind of my premise of being here this evening. A couple misconceptions and thoughts. Number one, not everyone from the Board of Ed and Town Council was on favor of this change. I, myself, voted very adamantly in the beginning of it, when we were having closed-door discussions, that I did not approve of the program going to the Stowe Building, because of the size of Stowe Building. So just to clear, any misconceptions on that, not everyone from the Board of Ed was, was in approval. Although the, the program itself, the Eagle Academy, is a great program, and I think there's another place in town that could happen. But my concern was, and will always be, that the placement of that program was not appropriate for that location. Number two, there was a comment made in regards to $750,000 being out of, out of touch, in regards to the reality of one air conditioner over cost. 2017, Newington had proposed to their Board of Education a $1.5 million fee to, to air-condition four classrooms, and those are ductless air conditioners. And that is $1.5 million for four classrooms. So, looking at $750,000 for air conditioner of a gym, I don't think is, is that out of touch, considering our neighbors to the south already put a bid in for something that was touch, considering our neighbors to the south already put a bid in for something that was around the same thing. Thirdly, in regards to the parking, I did see the new layout in regards to the parking. Concerns that come up with the parking is, you have an active crossway between four playgrounds on each side that you're going to be moving cars in and out of. You have an active basketball hoop in the back-left corner that cars will be going in and out of. I don't see any change in regards to the direction of how cars flow in and flow out. So that is going to be a concern from people that I, from people that I've talked to, and people that don't want to come before the board for, for concerns of just not wanting to come out and public speak. But the placement of those cars, the front is great, but the back, it's abutting the, the four playgrounds to the left, and the six playgrounds to the right, and the open basketball court that's back there as well. So there is concern about people walking their kids, and the concern about cars coming in and out with the flow of traffic. Bathrooms, I know this was kind of taken light, but listen, that building was made for kindergarten to sixth grade, and when the town turned that building over and it became the, the Criminal Justice Academy from crack and whatever it may be, you, you are looking to move a lot of kids in there who are just beginning to potty train, okay? This isn't a, this isn't an incidental thing. Bathrooms are necessary, you're taking kids out of Head Start Building, six classrooms that all have a bathroom inside that classroom because of concerns of potty training, and that's part of the development of that child progressing, not just educational, but potty training as well. Now you're going to be putting them into a building that's already congested in regards to the bathrooms that are in that building with the kids that are there. So the concern is going to continue to be, is there enough bathrooms in there, or are all these kids going to have issues with potty training because of this? It's a, it's a legitimate concern, it's nothing to balk at. I know bathrooms are, adults can hold it, kids can't. I've seen this firsthand. As a parent of, of two students that go to the Stowe Building, obviously I have concerns in regards to what's going to happen there, where the layout of the classrooms are going to be. I know earlier it was mentioned that the Board of Education members have all the answers in regards to where the kids are going to be placed. I don't know, and I'm on the Board of Ed, okay? I've been asking these questions since day one, I don't know where these kids are going to be placed. I've been told in the gym, I've been told in the, in the play lab, I've been told in conference rooms. And these are things that are coming out on Fridays that are updating me, doesn't give me any more answers, it just gives me more concerns, okay? You can't place 20 kids, 40 kids, 60 kids in the small area that we have. So that's the information I just wanted to bring out to you. Thank you, Mr. Ludwig, for bringing that to attention this evening. Thank you, Mr. Bronson, for the presentation this evening as well, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council? George, come on.
Let's be quick.
All right.
As far as the Hazerville Institute Conservatory Society, that 501(c) organization...
The mic. The mic, George.
Sorry, let's start again. Oh, let's be quick, I can hear myself now.
I gave you the full three minutes, don't worry.
As far as the Hazerville Institute Conservatory Society, the 501, 503(c) organization, I got one word for them, and it's perseverance. I can't imagine going through what they're going through, and having done what they've done over these past few years, and still come here. The second thing I want to talk about is Mr. Crissati, you mentioned the Blue Book, which the group is going to hopefully publish pretty soon, and putting in their information about getting the fuel assistance. The problem is, it's only going to go to the seniors, and that's the only place those books are going. It won't be going to other people who may become income-eligible to get this fuel assistance. The seniors would get this automatically if they go and fill out the forms at the Social Services Department, they see their income, they know automatically, or they should know automatically, to mention to them, you're eligible for fuel assistance, can we do something? And that's where it should be taken care of, okay? So that's basically all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else?
Walter Cruzal, 21 Charmley Road, $300,000, that wouldn't even fix this roof above our head. $30 million that Washington spent could fix a lot of roofs, that's half my budget. So, maybe you should ask your friends down in Washington why they're spending $30 million on useless studies and useless this. $30 million, I should say, is that what I said? So, but they've been doing a terrific job with that building in Hazerville, and they're close, they're really close, and it takes time, just like it takes time for us to get roofs done in this town, it's just bureaucracy, it's total binders of papers and, and everything just to put a roof on a building, it's ridiculous, but that's what it is. And Mr. Bronson, thank you for the presentation on the Stowe Building, thank you for all your support, this project, this, we're getting close on this too, and I think this is going to work. Head Start, Head Start moving into Stowe, we're going to be a model for this state that we've put the whole program together, and like the mayor said, adding steam to every child in this town, this will, this will do now. So, and the state's already looking at us to, they're going to, we're going to present this to other districts, this, this, this building in Stowe and how this program works. So, we're going to make it work, and that's what we do. We have to have faith in our staff, I listened to all the things that you went through, staff in this town works tremendous, we've got to have faith in them and, and let them do their work, and, and I know it will work, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Hearing on, I declare public communications closed. Any council communications this time? Councillor Sparazza?
I apologize for not saying this at the beginning of the meeting, but last Sunday, I was honored to be asked to participate in our, our Memorial Day Parade, and I want to thank the veterans in town that put that parade together. I missed that Mr. Plamondo wasn't there, but I, I think it was an extraordinary day. And I just want to say that what Mr. Denny said at the beginning of the meeting, the day, on Thursday, is the 75th anniversary. Our veterans won't be around for the 100th. And I, for one, appreciate and understand that the freedoms and liberties to have these types of meetings isn't because we were lucky, it was paid for with the blood of the people on the day and all the wars. So maybe on Thursday, I'm not saying it's a national day of prayer, but I'll certainly be thinking about what happened on the beaches of Normandy and grateful that God gave me the chance to live in this country. Thank you.
Just closing, I, I agree, so the, the Parkman School kids sang at, at the ceremony, if folks didn't see it, again, tying in the Rees Across America Ceremony, which I recommend everyone getting an opportunity to go see at Parkman School, so they actually marched in the parade, those kids, and sang "God Bless America" and "America the Beautiful", which are two great songs, no matter who sings it, they did a great job honoring our veterans, hung in there when it was hot. Again, so I think, it just, again, another testament, if you were here at the, the ceremony, Enfield Public Schools was on full display, JFK banned, Enfield High banned, Parkman School kids, and then those kids who I hope that we can bring next meeting from JFK, who will do a fantastic presentation in honor to our Civil War veterans, which, I mean, it's very interesting, I don't want to kind of throw it away, but 39 individuals who gave their life in the Civil War, fighting for the North Union, they are honoring, they did the research, really excited for people in town to see what our kids are doing. And last thing, if you're in, it's in a par, I apologize, maybe next meeting we have an update on the RFQ for the real estate option of, you know, I know we're looking forward to putting together, starting to market our buildings that we have, that we're trying to sell, you know, I know, I don't know where we're on that process, but to let people know that we actually, I know there's some vacant buildings in town.
Yeah, we've, we've chosen, we've chosen the Realtor, and Nelson's working now, the next phase is to identify the different properties that we'll have them be marketing for us, we'll update that.
Perfect, thank you. Councillor Ungar?
Lastly, on Monday, June 17th, is the Community Day of Prayer, and that will be held at the gazebo from 7 to 8, so everyone's welcome.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I'll just add, in, in the spirit of the 75th anniversary, the celebration, and what you mentioned as well about the parade, at the parade, Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysiewicz was here, and she's reached out to us, and we're working with her, they identified around the state, they did World War II veterans, and they've done Korean veterans, and now we're trying to look through between our assessors list and the clerk's office, identifying Vietnam veterans. Some towns have actually put ads out and solicited the public, but I'll take this opportunity, for any of those, they want to come, they're going to be going to all the towns, the governor and the lieutenant governor, to recognize Vietnam War veterans. We had quite a few from this town, so I asked the reporter, Jessica, and people at home, if you know a veteran who would like to be recognized, we're trying to cross-reference the lists, because they're not complete, so if anybody out there is interested, please contact the manager's office, give us your information, spread the word to neighbors and friends, because I think that's a wonderful thing that they're going to be doing in the fall, and they would come to Enfield anytime from August, September, October, and we'll have a, an award ceremony with everybody invited to recognize the Vietnam veterans of the town of Enfield. So please reach out to friends, family, anybody you might know, we will do something more on our website and a press release to do it formally, but we encourage everybody to come forward that served in that war and would like to come and be recognized by our state officials.
Anything else? A motion to adjourn by Councillor Denny, seconded by Councillor Crissati, all those in favor, by a show of hands. Nine in favor, zero against, good night, everyone, thank you.